To order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldrich?
He's not here, I'm mute.
Commissioner Waldrich?
I don't think she can hear you, Mr. May.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Patricia?
Commissioner Waldrich?
I guess just pass over so she can hear us.
Mr. Tippett?
Here.
Commissioner Wisman?
Present.
Mr. Sauer?
I'm here.
Mayor May?
Here.
Mr. Waldrich?
She's not looking.
All right, well, I guess we'll move on. First item, we're gonna go ahead and
Hello?
Do the TIF.
We'll call the roll, Patricia.
Can you hear me, Commissioner?
I got technical difficulty hearing. We'll go ahead and, since we have Mr. Parsons here, he's getting paid, we'll go ahead and let you go first. You're welcome, you're welcome to stick around after the meeting, but we didn't want you to stick around and have to pay you. Just kidding, just kidding. So, Mr. Parsons, whenever you, if you wanna kick it off, that's fine, or if you need us to have a staff presentation first, we'll, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, however you wanna do that, I was just really, I thought it was gonna be on to answer questions relative to this item, but there at least has been a discussion that the previous city manager had with, with one of the state commissioners in the Economic Development Cabinet about the development plan and some of the findings in it. And as a result of that, that's, that's why there was a thought to possibly delay the public hearing relative to that, that situation. So, and so really what the situation was is that to have a development area TIF district, you need to have, you need to meet and actually be eligible to apply for the grant, the type of incentive at the state level that we're at, we're gonna be requesting, which would be a mixed use program. You have to show that the TIF district meets three of seven factors of blight as set forth in the statute. Now, in my view, the development plan meets four of those seven, but during discussions that occurred between the former city manager and-
What is wrong with my computer?
You're on now, Patricia.
We can hear you.
But I can't hear you through my computer. I can only hear you through my phone.
Okay. I think-
If you're lying, yeah, we can hear you talk.
Yeah, you can hear me talk.
Um, I think, I'll ask the city attorney, I think that's allowable, since she can hear us and we can-
Wait, I can't hear the mayor. What'd he say?
It's fine, as long as she can, as long as we can hear and see everybody. As long as we can hear and see her, she can participate.
All right.
Ready to continue, or?
Mr. Parsons, thank you, sorry.
No, 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 no problem at all. So, basically during that conversation, there was some discussion about the potential of, of whether or not it might strengthen the findings in the development plan and actually potentially allow for greater state support as it moves forward. I'm not saying it's gonna be contingent like, relative to that, and I don't wanna use a suggest any type of quid pro quo, but there was some discussion about the inclusion of the dilapidated area and the depot area, I think, to the south. I don't know if it's the south or to the other end of Broadway, that might, in a sense, which is actually blighted, there's existing buildings there that are blighted, that actually may actually strengthen the findings in the development plan and actually then potentially provide another development project that could strengthen the overall concept of moving forward and things relative to that. So, my advice at that time to the, to Keith was that if, if inclusion of that would help strengthen the area, strengthen the development plan and actually make the state possibly more favorable to our review of the application, then I think it makes sense to go ahead and incorporate it in. It doesn't hurt anything, but it could be a positive for the, for the overall development. And now, now with that said, the, you know, I still felt that the existing development plan is valid and can move forward as it was drafted originally. So, just be aware of that. But in this case, if we can incorporate another project area into the development plan and actually then add some additional, show some additional buildings that are blighted, the question about the buildings themselves, the structures themselves, is that a lot of the blighted structures, the true blighted structures in the development plan as proposed have already been demolished. And so, that's one of the things the state questioned about whether or not, you know, you can use the, since a lot of the areas already been cleared, whether those, where there, whether there are blighted structures. Now, from my view, that's not just a final determination, because there's at least other, there are other structures, the Y building and other structures that are blighted to meet those standards, and there are other factors within the development plan that, that allows, that we definitely meet, such as need for infrastructure, loss of business, and, and other factors that make this, the development of this area in the downtown more difficult than possibly if this project was out on the highway where a lot of economic activity is occurring. So, with that said, I indicated, I think it is a benefit to incorporate that into the plan. A couple of things too, that as I, as I've reviewed some additional information that the planning development brought, provided me about some of the other aspects for the downtown plan that were not specifically referenced in the current draft of the development plan, I think the concept that the developer on that end of Broadway is undertaking actually does strengthen the plan even more, because it, it meets a number of the, some of the factors in some of the plan concepts set forth in that original, that downtown master plan dated November 2018. So, if I, if the board wants to extend the development plan to incorporate that new area, I'm gonna go back through and update some of the other provisions of the development plan, just to incorporate more of the provisions of that downtown master planning process and incorporate that into the plan. So, that's, that's an overall, my overall comment. I do think it could be a benefit, and, but if you don't wanna do it, then, then the existing plan could move forward as was drafted.
Okay. Commissioner Tippett had a question?
I do. I believe that the former city manager said that if we did expand the size of the TIF, we could drive committed future tax revenues down nearer to 50%, and I think that's probably an admirable goal. Do we have any idea, you know, how far, what, is there a percentage number that we can drive down by expanding the TIF, Mr.?
Commissioner, to be perfectly frank, at this point, I don't have, again, we've talked about this before. I have not yet received the actual financial data from the existing project or, or this new project that would give, would allow me to recommend what a fair percentage would be for the city and/or county to grant. Now, I will indicate that, so there, there, so in that regard, I can't answer that question. I do think the, if the other additional increment that might be generated, for instance, the project on Broadway may generate increment, but it may not need as much incentive, and therefore, that increment could, could potentially be used to reduce the overall incentive the, the city might need to grant for the overall project. So, I think there's some potential for that, and that's probably another reason. I think the concept that I have, that he was operating under, is the potential of a, a boot, a potential boutique hotel and, and some other, other commercial activity that would generate some pretty good increment that could be a benefit to the overall project.
Okay. Commissioner Wisman?
Jim, help me understand. You know, I am in no way in favor of doing anything that will delay the, the large downtown project any further. It's already nearly six months behind, and I feel like some of these projects aren't fully fleshed out enough to even be considered just yet, that maybe they don't quite know what they're going to be or what the financing is going to be for us to even bother considering when we have projects that are shovel-ready. And that is to say that the public infrastructure components of the two requested projects that are looking to be addendum to the, the hundred million dollar project in our city are in flux a little bit. Can you give us some thoughts on, on the, any repercussions if those were to not proceed and is, and explain maybe your thoughts on the public infrastructure? Because as of yet, there's been a proposal about a potential parking garage, but there's also surface parking potential, and as far as utility, streets, things like that, there really are no upgrades to service either of the projects that I know of. Everything is already in place, so can you speak to any of that?
Well, at this point, including that area into the development area does not mean that you would necessarily provide any incentive to that particular project. So, that would have to be a, discussions, we would have to have separately with the developer of that project as to what incentives that may be needed. All that would do is, is by including that in, it might help in some of our findings for the development area, and it also then would provide some additional capital investment and potential increment that might help the larger project. So, in this case, just like the, if you note in the current development plan, there is not a specific recommendation of funding to any project. It just indicates that the funding would be eligible. So, at this point, going forward and then take, the limited time it would take to amend the development plan, so you could go forward to a public hearing, is not gonna adversely affect your time schedule for ultimately approval of a TIF incentive, because at this point, we still don't have the, and I'm not critical of the developer here, we don't have the financial data that we need to provide a reasonable recommendation back to the board as to what the incentive level should be. All we were doing at this point is having the development plan in place, and then we weren't gonna, we were not gonna, the next step, quite frankly, one, the, the main project would be to put together a development agreement, and in terms of that development agreement, that would set forth those parameters, that would be subject to approval of the Board of Commissioners, and then that would then allow the move to move forward with the ordinance and the local participation agreement, which is actually the pledge agreement. So, what we're doing here really is not gonna delay, because we're not really ready to officially approve the local participation agreement and development agreement with the primary developer at this point, anyway.
Mayor, can I have a follow-up with that? Jim, there, there's been a lot of discussion around the community about the implications of this project and what a TIF would and would not do, particularly to existing businesses, and sorry, my computer just decided to get out there, particularly to the impacts of the existing businesses, residential, property taxes, et cetera. Can you define for us the, the boundary and what, what the implications would be on, on the taxes within the boundary we define versus those directly adjacent to it? I'm sorry to ask you some of these redundant questions, but I thought it good that we reviewed that again.
Well, I think, first of all, the, the pledges of taxes from the development area to a specific development project does not adversely impact, you know, businesses outside of the area. You're, what you're doing is, you're using a portion of that increment to promote a development that may not happen or should probably, will not happen without some type of incentive. So, in that situation, the, the taxes that would be generated from that new development project will more than exceed, greatly exceed the incentives you would be granting, and actually would generate new revenue to the city that you're not getting now. Now, there, 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 there could be, if there, if there is an impact to existing business, it may be that a development project of this scope and size may actually increase assessments around the area. In fact, you hope that that occurs, so that, you know, I guess you could argue that, you know, you may increase, potentially increase some real estate taxes from those surrounding businesses, only to the extent that a project of this scale, you would expect to have some impact on the, on the surrounding values. Now, that's not a direct issue. The one thing that I think's important to note is that the, especially the surrounding businesses of this project, the type of uses they plan and, and are not there now. So, so this would, this should complement the downtown and complement the downtown businesses that surround this. You could possibly argue that some of the, maybe the, the, some of the expansion of the hotel and some of those type of uses and some of those things might arguably compete with some of the hotels out on the highway, but that's pretty far removed, I think. So, if anything, I think this project would actually complement and support the, especially the service and retail and, 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 and the restaurant type businesses that really depend upon a lot of the activity in this area that's probably suffered as a result of the convention center not being there, and also a result of the, all those employees that used to be in the, in the, in the Capital Plaza Tower and everything else who might have frequented more of the downtown businesses not being there. So, I, I see this as a compliment, not as something to be affected. Again, you're not affecting any existing revenues. The, the other argument, I guess, the TIF would be that you are taking the incremental increase in the taxes, so you are, you would be pledging at some point a percentage of those taxes, and for this, this particular project, instead of maybe spending them at large for the community. But on the other hand, if this project doesn't happen, you don't have those revenues, anyway.
Jim, you sort of started there into what I was asking, but in just rudimentary terms, the revenues created by the project that are, that is to be built in what was the Capital Plaza area, and the boundary that we define, whether it includes the Broadway warehouses or otherwise, are the only eligible properties that can be taxed by the TIF district to pay for the public infrastructure improvements, which would be then paid to the developer essentially, instead of the city doing those improvements.
That is correct. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, didn't understand your question, and so you're only pledging the revenues, and quite frankly, it's kinda like some of the other incentive programs, these incentives are totally self-generating. The only, if you pledge a certain percentage, the project has to, has to generate the revenue to get any revenue to support those projects.
And, and so if I could just follow up, just, I'm trying to make this very clear for the public, because of what I've, what I've been hit with over the last couple of weeks in questions has been far-fetched from the truth. The, the project as it is, excluding the, the request for the expansion of the boundary, at current doesn't exist. We, as our city, receive no tax benefit from any of that property and have never for a very long time, save for the hotel, for the employment taxes and things, because it's been city, state, federal-owned property that we, we don't receive property tax from that. We only receive the employment tax. So, at current, we are receiving zero-nil for everything. So, anything that's built in the future, we will receive a portion of that tax, or the tax base that we would have received. We can apportion a certain percentage of that to help pay for the public infrastructure improvements. Anything I'm missing out there that the public should understand?
You're correct. And in addition to that, there are other revenues that will be generated from a project like this, like tangible taxes, insurance premium taxes, utility, the utility providers will get some income off the operation. So, there's a lot of other revenues that would be generated. The school district would be a big beneficiary of this, because the schools can't pledge tax revenue. So, a lot of times in these type of projects, the school district is a major beneficiary of the new revenue that would be generated.
And you mentioned that, that's a good follow-up question. I know Commissioner Tippett has asked several times. The school districts are exempted. There can be no apportionment of their property tax, for instance, taken to pay for this project. The independent school district would receive their full revenues from the, the TIF district.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Our city attorney needs to chime in.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Quickly, I just wanna remind everybody, we are specifically speaking to one expansion possibility, but there are actually two expansion possibilities that have been brought forth tonight. So, I just want to, some of the same factors, Mayor, may not apply to Old Y LLC, which is the actual request that we've had to be included in the expansion. So, I just wanna draw your attention to that, remind you to, to consider that as well.
Right. Mayor?
Commissioner Tippett?
We, we, we are not voting on the expansion of the TIF, just making, that's, thank you.
Commissioner Sauer? I can't tell if anybody has, if y'all don't mind, just raise your hand up, Doc, and stick it to the card.
Yeah. Just going back to that figure that is expected to be generated for the Frankfurt Independent School System, what was that figure again?
I don't have that, Commissioner. I can get you that information based upon, based upon the, the study, or I can compute it myself based upon the values. I think the, I'm not sure, the consultant that, when they did that study actually showed school tax revenues, but I can compute that for you.
Okay. And Mayor, I thought we were going to consider expansion of the TIF tonight. Is that not on the table?
Well, it is on, it's on the agenda.
Can I ask a question too about the Hayden property that is on Broadway? What's the, what's the address of the Hayden property?
Does anybody have, I don't have it.
I believe it's 100 Broadway, 101, 106 to 112 Broadway, 1114 Broadway. I think that's the addresses I have.
I'm not sure that that's correct. Yeah, that, Eric?
One second, I will for you, sir.
Yeah. That's what I got from the developer on that site. So, the three, 100 Broadway, 106 Broadway, and 1114 Broadway.
1114. So, Mayor, would you entertain a motion to expand at this time, or prefer not to?
No, we can, we can entertain motions if Commissioners-
I have a question about that, maybe.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion to expand the TIF district to 100-106-114 Broadway.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Sauer requires a second. Anybody got a second?
Mayor, I guess I'm a little challenged here by, by what it is we're actually voting on, okay?
Well, I've got a, you can-
I'll, I'll second the motion for discussion.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm gonna have to say that you can't pass, right? Okay, so now we got a question in a second. All right, go ahead and answer your question, please.
I think the concept here, and maybe this isn't for me, but I think the concept is, is that there was at least an, I believe, this issue of expansion needed to come back to the board for review before we would do any actual work to get the expansion done. If there wasn't any support for doing it, then, then this action doesn't expand the district. It simply allows us to move forward, to amend the development plan, to incorporate this new area into the plan. And I think that's where we are at this point.
Okay. And one more follow-up, if I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
As I understand it, if we do this, it includes more blighted areas, which may make us more eligible for more grant monies, right? That's, that's what we're getting at here, right?
Yeah, I think it might make the state more favorable. I don't know if it increases the grant money, but it certainly, they, it was suggested during that meeting that that might be a logical extension of our TIF district, and so I think all we're doing is trying to accommodate that at this point.
Okay. Laura, Ms. Ross, you have a technical comment?
Yes, just, just that, right now, what we're trying to do, and Eric Cochley's on here as well, if we need his input, but we just, we just need you guys to okay the area in general. You know, we have these possibilities of expansions so that we can move on to the, to the public hearing. That's really what we're doing tonight. It's not final decision-making on any of the important TIF items.
And how many days notice do we have to provide for, before we have a public hearing?
Seven-day notice, regular, it's a regular statutory notice for a general public hearing.
Yeah. I just wanted, I just wanted to get that on the record, because someone asked if we could do it Wednesday. I said, we wouldn't be able to do it. I don't think we can do it Wednesday because of the time.
And, yeah, I'm sorry to cut you off, Mayor. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I still need some time to update the development plan to get it ready for a public hearing. So, it, so that would be kinda difficult to do.
Okay. Commissioner-
Mayor, that was, that was one of my requests, actually. I, I am really not in favor of expanding if it's going to delay the project. I understand the developers have a timeframe and are anxious to get, moving forward, and the deferment of this that they were not aware of has already created some issues. So, I think it behooves us to move forward with the, the big project, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, we can always come back and amend our TIF boundaries and hold another public hearing and expand them at any time in the future that we would like to. Is that not correct?
You could do that. Commissioner, I will point out that I really, you know, if it's an issue of delay, the time it would take to amend the development plan, and even, even now, if we had to re-advertise the current plan, you might be saving a week at this point. I don't think it's gonna take that much time to, to do the amendments that we're talking about here, to incorporate this in. So, at most, you might be delaying the, the development plan public hearing by maybe a week to two weeks to incorporate this in. And, and, and so, so in that regard, you know, I understand your consideration and concern, and I appreciate that. I'm just pointing out to the fact that the delay here isn't, isn't that significant at this point, so.
Mayor, follow-up then. Thank you, Jim. The, what our staff sent us is expansive beyond Commissioner Sauer's motion, there is a lot beside the Broadway warehouses that does not have a street address that I understand was part of the intent for this, for a potential parking garage, as well as the Bridge Street property, if we wanna entertain that. That's not part of your motion, Commissioner Sauer. I don't know if we need, if you wanna expand to include those.
One point on the Bridge Street property that I'd like to address is that when you create a TIF district, you have to have some natural connections and reasons why you're doing the particular boundaries. I simply, it'd be, it would be really difficult to extend this across the river, to pick up a site on that side, and, 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 you know, it, I guess it's conceivably could be possible, but I think you're much better off, if you want to at some point incorporate that in as a TIF district, do that separately. I think it makes a lot more sense. There's a lot more reasons to connect the Broadway area than going across the bridge. And I kind of advised staff when we talked about that, that I didn't see how we can make a logical connection to incorporate that into this one TIF district.
Any other questions on the motion?
Mayor, I'm, Mayor, I'm fine with expanding the district to more of Broadway and more of that property that inadvertently was left out. Commissioner Wisman wisely pointed out that there's a piece of property there that maybe is not, not numbered, and of course, we would wanna do that. We've been at this for two weeks already, and I believe this- and I believe this property is beneficial in terms of buy-in by the state. That's extremely important for all of us, city and county members. So that's why I included it, and if do we have to have a amendment to the motion to include that unaddressed property, or how do you want to handle that?
If we need to be specific, we would have to amend it.
Okay. How do we title the property that we're going to include?
You know, instead of saying specific properties by their address, maybe we talk about property at the east end of Broadway, or something like that. I'll look through our attorneys for advice on if they think it, that'll suffice. I mean, well, that's.
Or Mayor, excuse me for interrupting, or maybe Mr. Cockley could talk to this as well. Maybe we say 100 through 114.
Yeah, one suggestion, Commissioner Sauer. You may be able to just reference in your motion to keep it simple, since you all have a map that I prepared, and it sounds like the area you're describing is the same areas on that map, and so I would defer to Laura, but if you can perhaps just reference that you'd like a motion to approve the area as depicted in the map, and then we can move on in that direction, if that makes sense.
And that's exactly what I was gonna say.
I have the parcel ID here either, if we, we want to be very specific.
Thank you, Eric.
So Commissioner Sauer, we can either, you can withdraw your motion, we can start over, or we can amend it. It would be actually easier if we just started over.
Okay, we'll withdraw it.
All right. Throw on.
I need to withdraw the second.
If you don't mind.
I withdraw the second, Mayor.
Thanks. So we're back to to one. If there are any motions, we'll accept that if you want to make a new motion.
Okay, to expand the Tiff development to the area depicted in the map that we, that was presented, do we have a name for the map, or some other designation for the map?
Just the area on Broadway.
Area on East Broadway, how about that?
Depicted in the map, provided.
That's, that's the motion.
Okay, I'm looking at both of our attorneys on that.
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett, now, is there any discussion on that motion?
Just, just a question, Mayor. There was two, two maps presented to us, one that included an area of the Old Depot, and, but we're discussing only the Hayden Project. Is that clear enough for us? The motion. Just trying to clarify which, where we're discussing, just the Hayden Project on Broadway.
Are you all, is that what your motion is intended?
Yes, the Hayden Property.
All right. And then, just to clarify though, this, this will not hold up proving parcel B empty, correct? Okay, now we can come back and put all, do the actual public hearing as early as next week. Probably have to do a special meeting. And Mr. Parsons, how quickly, after seven days, can you I defer to you to quick, you can advise on how quickly you can get that done?
Yeah, I would, it, I, just to be sure that we are correct, and this is going to be reviewed by all the different parties, I think it, you know, it takes, it'll take probably before, by the end of the week, or first to next week to get you an updated plan, I think, relative to that. You have to file the plan with the city clerk and fiscal court clerk at the time it's ready when you advertise the public hearing, so I think we had a staff meeting last week on this, we talked about the potential of possibly your meeting on September 14th might be a good date for the public hearing, and I think that's very doable. Again, I don't believe that's holding up anything because we still need to work on the development agreement with the developers themselves, which is actual, the critical issue for them, and, and, and we're not holding up anything on that side of the equation.
And that will require another separate vote, correct?
That is correct, because that, that document, the, what we're talking about now is simply the development plan, and having the public hearing on the development plan. The critical documents in the Tiff is the ordinance itself, the local participation agreement, and the development agreement, which basically is the doc, are the documents that actually pledge your tax revenues to the specific project in the development area.
And we can go ahead to just reach out to the developers, just let them know what's going on, and if they feel like we need to do something quicker, we'll, we'll, where we can expedite that.
That's right.
Okay, Eric Cockley?
If I may, just to add to that, Mayor May and Commission, I was gonna remind that we have been in the last couple of weeks, tried to stay in touch, as you know, with, with the developer and all the interested parties of the state, to make sure that everybody's aware that we're still moving forward, so that's, that's certainly our goal. And then also wanted to share with the Commission, because I think our discussion today could, could, a couple of how, you know, a lot of folks don't entirely understand what Tiff is and isn't. And so we've been working with public engagement staff as well, on some different graphics and some things to add to our project page and to share with the public to help explain what, what it does and doesn't do, and how that affects people's tax rates and things of that nature, because I think lots of folks have questions. So we're going to continue working on, on those methods to get out very, you know, simple educational graphics and messages to make sure that we, we educate the public as we go through this and educate ourselves.
Good point. All right, anybody have any other comments or questions before we vote?
Mayor, just, just, I may, I just would like to ask if we have some communications with the developer and try to proceed as quickly as possible.
I was, I was trying to actually recognize Commissioner Waldrich first, I apologize.
I didn't hear you.
That's okay. Commissioner Waldrich, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so, I'm listening to the conversation back and forth, and listening to everything, you know, that Commissioner Wisman shared, and and going back and forth, I kept hearing the word "issues" come up. So in regards to this and this development here, what are those issues? Can you share those issues? Because I've been, I'm unaware of those issues, so maybe it'd help me have a little bit more understanding of what we're, in the direction we're going, what those issues are. If, I don't know if Commissioner Wisman, you want to share, or maybe Mayor, I'm not sure. I know you had mentioned issues just a few minutes ago. Could you share some of those issues, so I can have some insight on that?
Commissioner Wisman, did you want to? Want to answer?
Sure, Mayor, I will go ahead. You know, there's been, obviously, a significant delay in this, this project because of COVID-19, and because of some inconsistencies in communication with our, our city staff and the developer that I have been called about, at least Commissioner Waldrich. I just want to make sure that this project that was supposed to break ground back in March is on sure footing and moves forward, and we take every opportunity we can to make sure that it moves forward expeditiously for the benefit of our community, because I'm, I have been, I will say, greatly concerned that it might be impacted by the, the COVID virus, and obviously, all the impacts going around, around the nation, and you know, what that might do to residential properties and commercial properties, which this is a large component of, but I, I've been made aware, and that there has not been the level of communication from our city to the developer that should have been. Specifically, in our meeting two weeks ago, where we were supposed to have the public hearing for the district, that that was delayed without the developer of the, the largest project knowing. So that caused some, some concerns. So I just want to make sure we are actively working towards resolving a way for this project to move forward expeditiously.
So, Mr. Wisman, since you answered, I appreciate that. Just a follow-up question, so could you share with me whom whom that was, like, who made you aware of that, and could you also share with me? Was this delay to help save our taxpayers' money, or was this another delay I'm not aware of?
I'm sorry, Ms. Waldrich, I'm not sure that that is, that any of that is actually any, the project was delayed because of, of the pandemic, and then recently, for the, this discussion we're having tonight, whether to expand the boundaries or not for local projects.
Okay, well, maybe, and in follow-up, Mayor, I apologize, and but just a follow-up is, I guess I just, when I hear the word "issues," it does cause me concern, because I do want to have all the information, so I appreciate you sharing your stance on that information as far as the communications concerned, because I had not heard the communication was an issue for the first time, I guess, in dealing with the Tiff situation until Wednesday. On Wednesday, in our closed session meeting, was the first time that I heard that there was any kind of miscommunication in regards to the Tiff. And so I guess, Eric, I do appreciate you sharing, but I just wanted to share, like, Mayor, could you give us a little bit more background on that? Because you had stated on Wednesday in our closed session that your words, as I wrote them down, it said, you know, when Tommy comes in, can he go ahead and get a chance on working on parcel B stuff? There's, there's some things, and I don't want to get off the thing, but I know there's been some issues where the communication from the city, that's been, from what I understand, from the developers, not, well, actually, yeah, that's been a lack of communication, and kind of jeopardizing the project from what you understand. Could you fill me in a little, I know you shared that in our closed session. Could you share a little bit more and like, explain that, and is that also something maybe you can add on to, I know Commissioner Wisman understood the communication part, could you share a little bit more on that, because I know you didn't go into detail in closed session, but?
Right, I, I had received word that the developers found out that the city had delayed the public hearing. They found out about it in the newspaper, that nobody from city government had contacted the developers, that that was a concern.
Okay, and so, who did you hear that, that they only heard from it in the paper, the city, the paper? Who was, who shared with you that they found, that they found out in the paper and not from a city official?
I believe that one of the members of the Commission had had a phone call or a meeting with, with one of the representatives of the developers' company.
Representative, okay.
And that there's a lot of concern about it. And I have not had a, I'm supposed to call one of the representatives to make an introduction to our new city manager. And we got that phone number over the weekend, and have not had a chance today to do so, but just the text base letting, to let them know that everything on the city side is on track. And that's their priority for us. And that we're, we're moving forward.
Okay, is that information that you can share with me through email? Could you send that email, those, that information to me?
I just said it, I mean, it was, they spoke to one of our commission members, and.
Oh, they had a verbal conversation, it wasn't an email?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So would whoever that Commissioner was, could you share some insight on why they were disgruntled, and why they were, why those you know, where we are with that, and where, you know, we don't want to go into, continue to move forward if they're disgruntled and not everybody knows what's going on, how can we make that better? With whatever Commissioner spoke with them, could you please share on that, and then that would probably help me with my questions?
Commissioner, yes, I, I received a phone call from the developer. Very disturbed by the actions of, of our staff that, that they were unaware of implications on this project. I won't reveal the source of that, because I said I would not. But it, it disturbed me greatly that there would be anyone that would attempt to somehow jeopardize the future of our community, and $100 million investment that will change everything. And it was unacceptable, and I assured them that I would look into it, and I've shared with the Mayor, and we have got to move forward with this project expeditiously, and make sure that our community's future is secured. That's, that's all I'll say about it.
Yeah, well, thank you for sharing that, because that does concern me. I know we were speaking about evaluations and things a few weeks ago in regards to a few of our employees. I think now is a great time to think about some evaluations on some of our staff in the way that we handle the Tiff in these projects, to make sure we're moving in the right direction. So maybe that's something as a commission that we can start talking to, so we can talk to that upper staff. I know we made a discussion that we needed, we would need to talk to staff, and, and, and talk to the new interim city manager coming in, you know, on what our goals were and what our focus is, needs to be, but maybe that's something we need to discuss with the staff that's still here, to make sure our staff is diligently meeting these deadlines, and definitely communicating.
I believe this is, that's what we're having now.
Manager, did you have, you had your hand up?
Oh, no, I, I didn't hear him, but I don't think it was worth anything. Thank you.
You said you have your hand up, quit.
Yes, I just, since I'm relatively new at this, we, we met with Mr. Parsons, Ms. Ross, Mr. Cockley, and Ms. Boyd to have come on board to help, to help get this project back moving forward again. So I think we're pointed in the right direction. We shouldn't have any further delays. The more meetings I have with Mr. Parsons, the faster I catch up. And, you know, like I say, I'm relatively new on this part, on the Tiff thing, but Eric, Mr. Cockley, and Ms. Ross have certainly helped me tremendously, and there is no intention on our part to let anything lag. It was, it, it all falls to me, so if I'm to blame, I'll take that blame, but we are moving forward. We have, we're going to do this by committee now. Since none of us, I don't believe, are the resident expert that Mr. Parsons is, and we're going to lean on him heavily to make this thing move to the future.
Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett.
Is the motion still on the floor?
Sure.
There's a couple of questions.
All right, Clerk, please hold the roll.
Commissioner Waldrich? At this time, I'll have to say no. I just feel there's too many open-ended questions that I'm not getting, the who's and the what's, and I'd like to, I would just like more clarity on that, so I'm gonna have to say no, though I support and want us to move forward with our parcel B, definitely, and would like to speak with Mr. Hayden and all those involved on what this would look like, but there's just too many holes of who and they, and what's going on in background conversations that are not being brought to, and, and other emails that have not been shared, so I just don't feel comfortable, so I'm gonna have to say no.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes, and I'd like to have an explanation, if I may. This is not the final document, okay? We, we reserve the right to refuse, to reject the final document. It's just another step in the process, so I vote yes.
Mr. Wisman?
Yes, and I'll explain my vote as well. This is just a boundary expansion, it has no implications on the final results and all of the details that are yet to be worked out about what financials we obligate to these projects are still to be voted on, and will be hopefully a very public and engaging process, and a, a quick process, I hope, as well. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Parsons, for helping us through this, and I just want to thank Mr. Russell for picking up the the ball and running with this in a, I think, a good manner. I think committee is the way to do this. We, we have too much at stake to risk on any few individuals in this process.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes, and I'd like to explain my vote. This expansion by Mr. Parsons' own, own comments is going to make our application more attractive. We need to get this done. That's all.
Mayor May?
I vote yes, and look forward to seeing this move along to fruition, and be a great benefit to our community. Parsons, thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
As always. So we'll, we'll wait to hear back as to when we can get the public hearing scheduled as soon as, as possible.
That's correct. I'll work with the city manager, get, get, get the whole plan updated, and the other staff. Thanks.
And here, and our apologies to, to those that have put their money on the line to this. We will absolutely push this as fast as we can. Next would be.
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay, sorry. Commissioner Sauer, and then Commissioner.
Mayor, we've gotten a little bit off track. Are we, are we at item number two sidewalks in the. Are we, are we at item number two sidewalks in the agenda?
We're trying to do the consent calendar, the entire, the item, whatever.
Okay, since we haven't started on that, I think I'm still in order then to move item number two in the consent calendar.
Oh, yeah, you can take some off.
To item number 12 in the action items.
We'd like to remove number two.
And I believe, Madam City Clerk, I think that makes it item number 12 in the action items.
Correct.
Right, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, Commissioner Waldridge.
Yes, in regards, you had said that this meeting right now is set for September 24th, I think. Eric Cockley may have said that as well. For September 24th, can we, and Laura, and I'm not sure how we would go about doing this, can we move forward with our city commission meetings to go back to our natural city commission meetings per the AG's statement that he put on his website to allow us to go back in, so our community can have more of a say and find a location that is large enough, just as other cities across the, across the state are doing. They're finding open airy areas that we can actually have people at our city commissions to be able to do that. So what, what are our steps in getting us back on the right track for that? And try to use what the AG has provided us in such a harsh time now, you know, throughout COVID, where our community can still have a say, where we can't just have an open meeting for them, and then all of a sudden we lose, you know, internet or whatever, and they don't get out, and we continue to move forward? How, what is our steps right now? Is it something that maybe we can talk to the AG on, getting our meetings back on the right track? That's for you, I'm sorry, you're, I can't hear you.
September the 14th, not the 24th, correct?
The 14th, okay. Okay, September 14th. My goal is like, trying to get our meetings back on the right track. As long, and I read what the AG Attorney General had put on his website, that basically, as long as we have the meetings on the same day at the same time, they can basically be considered regular meetings where we can bring up new business and old business and have our community be part of our meetings again, and not really hold us to a stringent, to a stringent profile and agenda that the mayor has us on right now. And that way, a lot of us could, myself, in general, would like to put some more things out there on the agenda and have them brought forward. So how can we, what is our steps in getting us there? Definitely for the September 14th, how can we get a big airy spot and get the community where they can be there if they want, and we can social distance? And I'm not asking anything that we've not seen other communities across Kentucky and other states do, because some of the same things are going on in those areas. Could you help me with that?
Mayor, is, okay. So, yes, and I'll, I will answer this, I think it's in order because it's procedural. I think we can discuss it a little, Mayor. Just because it's about our meetings. You're, you are correct, Commissioner Waldridge. The Attorney General has said that we can treat even these video teleconference meetings, when they fall on a regular meeting date, they can be treated as regular meetings as far as the agenda goes. So in that case, we could have old and new business and, and similar items that we have in our normal, regular agenda meetings. We have chosen from the get-go of this emergency to treat them as full special meetings, so that, with a specific agenda, so that we didn't get too far off topic without the public's involvement. You know, you can see two sides of this coin. But basically, the answer legally is that anytime you all want to change the format or to change these from special meetings, you could so direct the city manager and staff, and we would do so. But that is the prerogative of the Board of Commissioners in conjunction with, you know, the emergency and what we need. So, but yes, we absolutely can change it going forward at any time you all direct.
Question, Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett.
Would that require a vote from the commission on each meeting, potential meeting separately? Could we, see, I, I, I see that if we do it under this pandemic situation, if we just make a blanket, you know, policy, we, we, we might find ourselves needing to adjust it some. So I, I just would throw that out for thought.
You all can change back anytime you want, sorry.
I guess our concern has been, since people can't come in person, that they would feel like they are not able to be there to make comments on anything that's not on the agenda. And by having the agenda published the Friday before our Monday meeting, we feel like that's giving people however many days that is to, to, to have comments and submit those comments. I know meeting with emergency management staff, we do not feel that it is safe to have in-person meeting. And at that, at this point, since our rate of infection continues to rise in our community, we were actually, we've had discussions about even putting more restrictions on businesses and, and events right now. And I think we just today are going to issue, we haven't already issued a more stringent policy on leasing or renting our parks facilities. And I will defer to Mr. Russell on that, but that, that's the reason for public safety and the safety of, of all of our staff. Commissioner Tippett, and then I'm going to go back to Mr. Russell.
I, I, I think that's a timely comment, Mayor. I, I mean, I take many walks through our community by myself or with my dog. And frankly, I'm alarmed, I'm more than alarmed by the amount of people who do not social distance still, who do not, who refuse to wear masks still, and the numbers are going up. Right now, the only, right now, the only way we have to fight this disease is to social distance and to wear masks. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm appalled that there's a significant amount of our populace who just refuses to do it. And it's just good public policy, it's public health policy. And Mayor, I would encourage you to take, to make somewhat of a, I would encourage you as a commissioner to make a stronger stand on these public health issues. Thank you.
You're welcome, and we will. We'll, we'll address this with our, we'll discuss it with our public health folks and our emergency management team, unless Mr. Russell wants to add any. Thanks, I said, I would call on you if you wanted to add something. Yeah, okay, Commissioner Waldridge.
And, and by all means, Scott, I definitely agree with you on that. And so it wouldn't even have to be an airy spot, it doesn't have to be a spot. We could even ask for our IT staff to set up a call, a call-in number for people to have their voices heard, rather than just an email. And I understand and I agree, Mayor, that, you know, Friday, with they, with the agenda coming out, that does give, you know, a few, a few days, hours for the community to put in their comments on what's on the agenda. But that is, that's my point, it was perfectly, see, we, they're only allowed to talk about what's on the agenda. They're not able to have discussion on anything that's not on the agenda, agenda, and you're limiting that, just like tonight, Vox Car wasn't on the agenda, and our community have questions. Just as an example, that's what I'm speaking of, like, open, old and new business can help us have other things our community wants to talk about and allow them. And if it wasn't meeting in spot, we can do call-in number for them to hear their voices, for their voices to be heard, that's what I'm asking.
Sure, we will take that into consideration. And if we have to make, we make tough decisions, then I will continue to stand behind our emergency management team and public health officials on when we make these decisions. It's important to wear masks, and anyone who thinks that it's, it's not important, that it's okay to make fun of wearing masks, is not helping us get our point across to the community as leaders. I will continue to tell people to, to wear masks. That is a federal, state, and local requirement. Just this last week, I was on a call with folks from the White House. And in that discussion, I, actually, sorry, Vice President Pence just spoke with the governors of all 50 states this past week and said to remind them to, for people to follow their state and local leaders. And that's what we've decided to do here, so we would hope that our members of the commission and staff would buy into that and help us make that decision and lead by example. And, and that's the decision we've made. So I understand it's certainly inconvenient for folks. I would say it's inconvenient for, for me as well, and all of us. But that's the decision that we've made, and that's what we're going to, to follow until it stays to do otherwise.
Right.
So.
Mayor.
Commissioner Waldridge.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a... Um, no, I just want clarity, because I felt, I, I clearly understand, I, I clearly understand you and Tippett, and I agree, as my children and I wear masks, I even hand out masks, I've bought extra masks. So I'm all for the mask and want the people of Frankfurt to definitely know, this is not a mask issue. This is us, I, I know we're deflecting from that, we are getting away from that. So I do appreciate you guys wearing masks, so thank you for sharing that with Frankfurt. But I don't, I want to leave this, so we don't get off of the subject. It's to let our community to be more part of our meetings and not let our agenda just be a couple of agenda items and not letting our community voice their opinions. And for just a couple of items for them to talk about in between Friday and that. So that was my focus, I definitely believe in masks, I wear masks. So thank you guys for definitely sharing that. But to get back on the subject, it's to try to get our meetings where the community can, can communicate with us, whether that's an IT phone call-in or something of that nature. That was the purpose of this discussion. I apologize, it's going way back, but I feel like when we're trying to discuss something that is for the community, we do go around, because some of us tend to deflect on other things like masks.
Well, again, it goes back to our decision that we made to keep people safe from gatherings. And also, there's arguments on the other side from folks that would argue from the other side that the meetings do not, we do not need to have items brought up without being noted in advance. So there's, there's two sides to that coin, so we're going to take the cautious side on things. And we'll, again, we'll review with our emergency management team and public health officials and advice from, from the experts. And at this point, there's nothing in our horizon that would suggest that we would do anything but keep those restrictions in place. Anyone else have anything before we move on? Commissioner Wisman?
Mayor, thank you. You know, our community is at the highest warning level right now for, for COVID. And I, I understand Commissioner Waldridge's concerns, but, but we cannot get back into routine as it is. We have to remain vigilant, and we, as a commission, have to lead by example. And I think the only way, it's inconvenient and it is frustrating, and I understand, but is to put out our agenda ahead of time, that we all agree to discuss items. Of course, the public can come to us, and I'm in favor of looking at some other ways, video submissions or otherwise for, for our community to submit comments to us. But if I've asked the community to, to reach out to me for anything, but I think the only fair way to move forward is to notice our meeting items on the agenda and let the public have plenty of time to submit comments and not to veer off topics any more than, than we have to.
All right. If anyone in the community has anything they'd like from the mayor, the commissioners to look at, please send us those, we do service orders, I do service orders, where I'll send that to the, to the city manager, to, to direct to the staff, and that's something I've done for, since 1992. We'll continue doing this. Commissioner Waldridge, further?
Yeah, well, I just wanted, I just wanted to say thank you to Eric Wisman for making that comment and, and literally saying that COVID, like, it is, we are in the highest warning level right now with COVID, and we must lead by example. And it may be an inconvenience to go back and forth, but he couldn't have said it better myself. Like, it is highest warning level, yet we got rid of our city manager and brought our, brought our emergency management over for other duties, but there we go. I guess that right there makes the comment.
Is anybody else having, oh, Commissioner Sauer?
Mayor, let's move on to the rest of the agenda.
Okay, one thing we do have, I believe we have, did we get two comments? Okay. Does the city clerk read those, or do we want, I think, city clerk, or... If you have those.
I do, would you like for me to read them?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, the first citizen's comment is from Rachel Yet. I hope I said that correctly, and it's regarding Dolly Graham. It says, regarding the NPS LWCF grant that has been said to be specifically for the renovations of Dolly Graham, if the city does not receive this grant, what does that mean for the upgrading of Dolly Graham? Does the LWCF grant come with an expiration date? If so, what is the expiration date? What are the other improvements that Dolly Graham is expected to see in the very near future? Will Dolly Graham receive upgraded usable bathrooms with outlooks that are cleaned and sanitized before Capital View receives any of the upgrades mentioned on the agenda for this meeting? Thank you, Rachel Yet, South Frankfurt native.
Okay, thank you, and then, do you have a second one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The next comment is from Lisa Unger, and again, it's regarding park upgrades. Dolly Graham needs improvement first, she says. I understand that the city is waiting on federal funding to start work at Dolly Graham Park, but this park has been left behind for years, for years, and Dolly Graham deserves upgrades before any other park in town. Community children often spend all day at the park during summer with non-working bathrooms and outdated and unsafe playground equipment. Dolly Graham Park is consistently left out of the community's, community discussion. I was upset to see it not listed on parks' signs about meetings in regards to the master plan. I attended the meeting that was scheduled after the city realized an error was made. Only one commissioner was in attendance and no parks' employees. It is time to give this community what it wants and needs. I appreciate the wanting to upgrade other parks, including Capital View Park and Fort Hill, but is now the right time? I have hosted multiple trail race events at CVP and would love to see upgrades to the shelter and bathrooms so that, so that they are safe and in safe working order. But even, I think, during a pandemic, maybe we need to wait to spend those funds. Also, shouldn't we use consultants for the Parks Master Plan and wait to do major renovations until we have a Parks Master Plan? Fort Hill at Leslie Morris Park does not need additional fencing. It needs repair to existing structures. I was there two weeks ago and noticed failing wood flooring on the cabins and park signs that could use some work, not to mention the park signage. I think you should vote to wait to spend money on these minimal park upgrades until we have a Parks Master Plan. And why was there no Parks meeting for Fort Hill with the consultants last week? Lisa Unger, and that was it, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, did you want our staff to address that from Parks?
We have a Dolly Graham update and a Fort Hill update later on in the agenda, Mayor. I was going to address both of those things then.
We can do that then. All right, we'll just do that then. All right, thank you. Next item is, and we thank those folks for their, for their comments. We'll, we'll address those under the agenda. Consent calendar, we moved item number two off to number 12 under action items. So at this time, I will call our city manager to read the consent items, please.
So we'll be starting with number three, which is on my, is that correct, gentleman, lady?
Yeah, because we had the minutes, and I don't think anybody had any, nobody submitted any changes for those, so.
Okay. Purchase order with USALCO for aluminum sulfate sewer to authorize a contract extension with USAALCO Fairfield Plant LLC for aluminum sulfate for phosphorus removal at the wastewater treatment plant. To authorize, Mayor, to sign all documents. Failure, failure to purchase the aluminum sulfate will result in permit violations during summer months should the discharge from wastewater treatment plant exceed the maximum discharge limits. A purchase order for the, in the amount of $100,000 will cover the department's estimated need for fiscal year 2021. The line item is approved budget under chemicals. The line item is approved budget under chemicals. Number four, contract extension with EnviroTech. Uh, the purpose of memo is to recommend authorization of contract extension with EnviroTech Chemical Services, Inc. to provide parasitic acid for disinfection of the plant effluent and to authorize the mayor to sign any documents. Annual budget for PAA is one hundred thousand dollars. This will provide secondary disinfection for the effluent flow for the entire year. Number five on mine, the purpose of the memorandum is to request approval from the city commission for a joint funding agreement with the United States Department of Interior, US Geological Survey, uh, and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents. Um, cost to maintain the gauging station, which is on the Kentucky River, is forty-three hundred dollars with sewer department funding three thousand and USGS funding thirteen hundred. Funding is available in account two hundred point six eight point five three two nine five. Six, purpose of this memo is to request approval of change order, which will extend the comp, the completion date to September fifteen twenty twenty and add an amount of fifteen thousand four twenty-nine twenty-six to the Collins Lane Storm Sewer Project. Um, this brings a total prod, total construction cost to five hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars twenty-six cents. Balance of twelve thousand one seventy-three plus the plus the change order, amount of fifteen four twenty-nine twenty-six. A total of twenty-seven six twelve twenty-six will be paid from the stormwater account. Seven, Stormwater Project Amendment Number Two. Purpose of the memo is to request approval of Amendment Two and an amount of seventy-four hundred dollars to HMB's professional services agreement for providing extended inspection and construction administration services to the Collins Lane Storm Sewer Project and approve for the mayor to sign all related documents. The funds are available in the stormwater account seven three five point zero zero point five one one zero zero. Number eight. Purpose of the agenda is to seek commission approval to enter in a contract with OJIS Engineering for administration of and consulting support services related to the extension of nineteen twenty UPC for contract projects and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents. With approval, Public Works will spend up to thirty thousand dollars with OJIS Engineering for administration, consulting, support services related to the repair of damaged sidewalks and other contract concrete projects at multiple locations throughout the city of Frankfurt. Funds for these services, thirty thousand dollars are available in municipal aid account five three five point zero zero point five one one zero zero. Personnel action promotion, John Varner, Public Works Garage, Maintenance Tech Two to Garage Foreman. Termination Eric Temple Sewer, uh, eight twenty-five twenty, Plan Operator. Termination Ben Ritchie Sewer, eight twenty-five twenty, Maintenance Tech One. Resignation Gary Mueller Fire, eight fourteen of twenty. Fire Marshal civilian authorized payout of accrued leave. Resignation Melissa Ballard, Public Works Transit, eight twenty-one twenty, Transit Driver authorized payout of accrued leave. Resignation Sir Rippey IT, eight thirty-one of twenty, GS Analyst Two, authorized payout of accrued leave.
All right, that includes agenda items. And you, I'm gonna ask real quick, uh, because when we don't discuss, this is just a technical question to the city attorney. Do I need, should I recuse myself on items six and seven? I don't think so. I think it's a problem, but okay, I just wanted to double check. All right. All right, so we take a motion to accept uh consent count. Move back, Commissioner Wismann?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer, all members who signify their presence tonight will be considered to vote aye on the consent items. Those are approved and we um congratulate those who got promoted and uh on the resignations, we wish all those folks uh well. Stay with me. Next item would be would be board, these are all the appointments. Um, you can take them individually, we can take them as a group, whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the appointments as presented.
All right, move by Commissioner Wismann?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer. I didn't, someone else, I can't tell. Did I get that right?
Yeah, well.
I think we did at the same time. It's fine.
Uh, any discussion? If not, uh, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wismann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Uh, yes, and to explain my vote, uh, glad uh glad to see in particular uh the reappointment of Stephen Mason to the plant board. Uh, he brings a lot to the table, especially when it comes to numbers. He's a great budget person, knows a lot about finance through his training and experience with LRC. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, and we thank the board and also thank these members for their continued service. Um, next item would be action item. First would be second reading of an ordinance that asks the city solicitor to read item number one by title and summary of it, please.
An ordinance amending section forty point two one of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to Police Department original appointments. This ordinance amends section forty point two one of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances related to Police Department original appointments to change the examination process to operate on a quarterly basis. Require oral interviews when at least eight applicants are eligible. Remove unnecessary procedures for when the interview list exceeds twenty-seven applicants. Establish a revolving patrol officer recruit eligibility list consisting of individuals approved by the Civil Service Board whose name shall stay on the list for one calendar year. Require applicants to wait one calendar year before applying for a police officer position again and amends the accelerated candidate process to accommodate applicants who may not be currently employed with a law enforcement agency.
All right, thank you, Sauer.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Move back, Commissioner Wismann?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, you know, I uh want to salute Chief Adams. Uh, I'm sure uh the city attorney had some something to do with this as well to keep us legal and the HR director as well. Uh, this to me and maybe Chief Adams is available uh to comment on it. Uh, this will expedite the process and uh keep, as they say, more boots on the ground, which I'm sure we all support.
Hi, yes, I um this will give us an opportunity to um keep our best recruits at the top of our list and, you know, sometimes right now somebody will turn in an application and it'll be on file for a year if we start a process. So this will help to um to keep those people in, those good people, those good applicants in our process and hopefully get them on board with us faster.
All right, any other?
Mayor, may I make just a mayor, I just want to thank Chuck. I told him the other day I was proud of him and and wanted to thank him for um some of the the ideas he's brought to the police department. Um, we're now looking at or we've approved UK internships from the University of Kentucky. Uh, Chuck is teaching at Kentucky State, and I think this will go a long way to um helping us recruit a a very diverse and talented workforce that has been a struggle for um at times in the past, let's say. Um, so thank, thank you, Chuck, for making this happen.
Any other comment? All right, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wismann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Um, yes, that item was adopted. Um, next would be a presentation on the state on EMS memorial. This is a request to designate land uh for a possible site for an EMS memorial. And city manager, did you want staff to address that or would we have someone here to make the presentation?
Chief Briscoe has got this.
Oh, there he is. Hey, chief. Okay, go ahead, chief.
Oh, I I I believe that Dan Durham, which is the president of the Kentucky EMS Memorial, is on the phone. I think.
Is Dan, Mr. Durham, are you on the phone with us?
And it, since he's not, I can explain. So as you can tell from your memo, back in two thousand ten, I believe there was another EMS memorial foundation that had approached the city and may have gotten some soft verbal commitments. However, it did not go through. For whatever reason, that group has since uh been abolished in the in about two thousand sixteen, I believe they they came back and asked me to be a part of the EMS Memorial Foundation, being a representative of the city and trying to push forward for a state EMS memorial similar to our Kentucky uh fallen firefighters memorial at Juniper Hills. Uh, what this is is uh they're still planning and they're still getting some paperwork lined up. But they are, we're looking for some, the order to have the land uh set aside for them as they continue their their ventures. Uh, and you can see that from a previous outgoing commission, they had had given them the uh background and they gave us to go ahead and due to everything else, the COVID, the change administrations, it kind of got pushed down to a low priority. Uh, but we need to, I'd like to keep going. I think they want to keep going. Uh, they're getting designs hammered out and need a little bit firmer commitment before they forge any forward with the design element. And I'll try to answer the best questions. Uh, apparently he has not been able to get on, so sorry about that.
I think it's pretty, pretty simple. Um, so commissioners have any questions?
I do, Mayor.
Commissioner Wismann?
Um, just, just a couple of things, uh, Chief Briscoe, the um I remember that the um the pool project was was a little bit limited because of the memorial being there and I'm I'm a little bit concerned. I I can't make out the map, the site map very well. It's it copied to our documents really dark, so it may answer my questions. But um I I'm wondering timeframe that, first off, I'll say I fully support the project, of course. But I'm wondering about their timeframe and if we might include this as part of the the park master plan um to make sure that maybe there isn't any implications of of whatever may be in the future. I'm just not sure what the boundaries are looking like of the the location from the the map that we got.
Actually, I think the problem was beforehand was the uh slope of the uh the land with the problem with the with the aquatic center because I specifically asked that we had an Olympic sized pool and it was, it had something to do with the uh topography, not so much the memorial. Because we could certainly, uh, if we had to, we could move. I think that memorial could probably be be moved, but we didn't ask. Did Mr. Durham get on the phone?
Uh, yes, I'm mayor, I am here now. Yes, I apologize for taking problems.
That's okay.
I can answer Commissioner Wismann's que, uh, if you if you were to look at the existing fire memorial, the designated spot is to the right. It kind of they have met and I'll let Dan jump in here in a few minutes, but the Fire Memorial Foundation and EMS Memorial Foundation got together and they're looking at bridging those two uh memorials together so they can have dual seating that can flip both sides. So if you look, the, if you were to have the walking path that kind of shoots down to the right, if you're looking at the memorial, it shoots down the walking path and then it kind of hooks up back to the left. It's that area that sits in between the existing fire memorial and that but the concrete blacktop walking path and probably between the two large trees that were just cut out. I can't share my screen. I I've probably got a better map that I could probably share, but uh as as far as timeline, they're still quite a ways off. Uh, like I said, they they've still got quite a bit of fundraising to do before they can, they can kick it down. But this was just one of the legal checkmarks that needed to be hit before they pressed on a whole lot further. And I will open the floor to see if Mr. Durham has anything to add.
Uh, Mr. Durham, did you want anything? We've, we've already heard the chief just give a quick presentation. Um, I don't think we need a whole lot of information. That that was just a technical question that one of the commissioners had.
Right, and and thank y'all very much for allowing me the time. And I I have been uh was catching the first part of that on Facebook, so I did hear some of the discussion, but um the uh again, that we just work, wanted to working, we're working in conjunction with the Fire Kentucky Firefighters Association who who administered and and oversees the fire memorial and uh working with them in our plans. Uh, we originally had a a plan. Uh, we have a draft of of a design. Um, and before we finalize any design, we would obviously bring that back to you all um for approval as as you see fit, uh, so that it does blend in well and and, you know, is is attractive to to the park as well. Um, we originally had planned before COVID hit to have that prepared in by May. Um, that obviously has put that on hold until we can can, you know, till later on in the year. Um, but uh I just wanted real quickly to say a huge thank you to Chief Briscoe and uh uh you all have an excellent fire chief uh there and I appreciate his work with us. He's worked right alongside with us and I have to say a public thank you to him for all his work. And I'll answer any questions you have.
All right, chief, does anything else, Dan?
Uh, Bobby has allowed me to share screen and I can share the map if y'all would like to see it.
Okay, you can throw it up.
So I I believe you should be able to see the existing uh layout of the firefighter memorial. And this line here represents the walking path. It goes up through there and it's this area right through here is it what they're looking at as a potential spot.
Thank you, chief. I couldn't tell that from, I couldn't see the walking lines or any of that from my map on my copy.
Okay, I'm gonna try to figure it out. Had to stop sharing my.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
Quick question, how long does it take to complete the project?
I don't know. Go ahead, Dan.
Go, I, we honestly, uh, that, that, we don't even have a a timeline design. Uh, until we get a a design finalized and know a figure uh so that we can begin fundraising hard and fast, uh, I I'd like to say we would have it built in a year to two years, but uh, you know, it just kind of depends on fundraising. Uh, we won't know how much we're gonna need till we finalize the design. So we're we're very early in this process. This is just one of the very early initial steps, but we will more than keep you all uh advised and and updated on that as the project moves forward.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm just gonna say I think this is a a very noble and worthy project. The uh ceremonies at the firefighters memorial are always very moving each year, so um I'll I'll move to approve.
All right, move back, Commissioner Wismann?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Waldridge. Any discussion? In nine, I'm trying to scramble, everybody's like scrambled all over the the monitors after scanning the whole thing. Uh, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wismann?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, that's approved. So uh, Mr. Durham, we'll wait to hear further from uh the organization as to when you're all ready to proceed and then when you uh get in your fundraising. Part of that, I know it takes, it took a while to get the firefighter memorial up and going. But we look forward to uh the day we can dedicate uh the new memorial. Thank you for your work.
Thank you all so much for your support. Thank you all very much.
Stay safe. Uh, skip it. All right, next item would be number three, Declaration All right, next item would be number three, declaration of two handgun surplus property. This is the, a retired police captain can purchase his handgun that he carried along duty. This is a process that we have implemented and have carried on for several years. So if there's no questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve. Unless you have questions.
Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walbridge. Any discussion? C-9, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wismann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, I'm approved. Next is the item number four. It's a resolution to provide upgraded sanitary sewer service for industrial, institutional, commercial, and residential growth in the Frankfort-Panland County area. This is, uh, just going to allow our sewer department to be able to apply for loans.
Mayor, move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Wismann.
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Tippett. Uh, any discussion? C-9, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wismann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, I'm adopted. Next item is number five, Fort Hill fencing. City manager, uh, had let me know earlier that our parks director is available, and Mr. Tippett, you want to be, you might come on, do you want to be recognized?
I just want to remind you, Mayor, that I have a presentation. Uh, I can do that before Mr. Pickens or after him, whichever is, uh, the proper order.
I would say I'm always going to refer to the commissioners. If you'd like to go ahead and make your presentation.
Let's do the, uh, Tippett's presentation first.
Sure.
Commissioner Tippett?
Okay, thank you. Bobby, are you at the ready? I'll be repeat. Okay. Um, I'm, I'm just going to read it verbatim. Try not to interrupt. But, um, we, we have Mr. John Carlton. Has just done fabulous job of, at the request of the museum board, to place all the archival information from like 1968 onto a PDF.
Wow.
For the for use of by the staff. And many things have come to light in this exhaustive investigation. The most significant thing that has come to life, to light is, uh, the city purchased, uh, Fort Hill from the state with the use of federal grant monies. That is a significant, uh, finding, and we've asked Ms. Ross to research uh, that and many other issues as to the legal parts of what can and cannot be used or done at, at Fort Hill Park. Uh, it may very well be, uh, and I have no problem with this, that uh, it, it can, it can be used as a multi, multi-use park under those federal guidelines, but it has yet to be determined whether that is the case. Uh, there are also many restrictions on, on covenants and deed restrictions, uh, and easements, uh, that have been provided to city staff by Mr. Carlton, uh, that were not available to city staff in this long-running discussion that started sometime last year. So, without any further ado, I'm going to read what we have found. It's come to my attention that there's been direct impact to the historic and archaeological sites at Fort Hill as a direct result of the construction of multi-use or trails or bike paths at Fort Hill. On Thursday, August the 13th, I took a walk at Fort Hill. Down Military Road carrying a map of the 2013 Jay Stotman Archaeological Survey of Fort Hill, which shows all the archaeological and historic assets of the park. I also had with me a Phase One map of the bike trails, which was provided to the city when these trails were proposed. I went to see how the bike trails impacted any archaeological and historic sites. Now, if you can see the pink line there, that is a dry stone fence, much like you would find on Old Frankfurt Park. Uh, this is problematic. So, let me move on. What I found was very problematic. Let's look at slide one, which is here. The bike path trail, which has already been constructed. I want to point out that this map has been edited to show the locations of the military road and a historic dry stacked, stacked stone fence that runs from Wilkinson Boulevard area to the center of the park. You will notice by looking at this map that, A, the trails both start and end on the military road, an archaeological site identified in 2013 by the Jay Stotman Report. The trails cross the dry stone stacked fence twice, according to this map. All right, Bobby, let's go to slide two. Uh, that's not two. Okay, we, we need to find the, the, um, the ones with, uh, the military road. There we go. Slides two and three show, uh, two places bike trails impacting military road, which is on the National Historic Register and definitely protected by the Antiquities Act. It's my understanding, according to bike path proposal, I've, I've dated in April 2019, that a 4,000 pound micro excavator was used to construct the trails. Was there a need to, indeed, a piece of heavy machinery on the military road, a known archaeological site that was probably predate the Civil War? Okay, can you show the next slide, Bobby? Okay. This is, uh, a stone path. Let's see, further look at slides four and five. Uh, two places on the bike trails cross the old dry stacked stone fence. As you can tell, that these old stone fences run, are common throughout central Kentucky. Uh, it's just problematic. On walking the trail of Fort Hill, I've made with for visitors, it says the wall was formerly the perimeter fence for the old boundary of the city of Frankfurt. Uh, it may also more specifically, uh, be the perimeter of the fence separating the original 1780s land grants from Robert McAfee and Humphrey Marshall and James Wilkinson. Those are all names familiar, anybody familiar with Frankfurt history. From which the town of Frankfurt was founded, uh, from Hancock Lee track. From Lee's Town, which was founded. So regardless, this is a very old fence. There is one place in particular that gives us pause on, on slide five. Okay, the next slide, Bobby, if you have it, please. Okay, there we go. Uh, is a bicycle path across a stone fence. How's a bicycle supposed to cross the wall? Is someone supposed to cross the fence by ramping over the fence, or is someone supposed to pick up their bicycle and cross the fence by walking over it? Either way, both activities risk negatively impacting the fence and are unacceptable for family-friendly and, and history-friendly bike paths. Lastly, let's look at, uh, slide six. That's the one with the red squiggly lines, Bobby. There you go. Thank you. Um, again, this document has been edited to show the archaeological historic site assets of the park. The red squiggly lines are intended to show the end result of all bike path destruction. How much of this construction has been done, we do not know, but this map and its intended result, evidenced by all the different ways it crosses the military road, the stone fence, and archaeological areas is very problematic. I'm interested to know who at which, at which agency reviewed and approved this plan and proposal. The yellow parts of the map are archaeological sites. You can see that they are intruded on by the red lines, which are proposed bike paths, and you can also see the military road, which is crossed several times. Mayor, I move to direct the city solicitor to draft an open records request to the Kentucky Heritage Council to answer whether, whether the KH, uh, HC received a proposal for inquiry for the construction of a bike path or multi-use trails at Fort Hill by any person, entity, private, public, internal, or external between 2017 and 2020, to be reviewed for any potential impact to historic, archaeological, environmental, and natural sites on the property. And if so, to provide copies of all relevant documents and communications, both physical and electronic, including emails regarding the proposal or inquiry. KHC's review of that proposal or inquiry, KHC's approval or denial of that proposal or inquiry, and any other current or final disposition concerning the proposal inquiry. Also provide documents, communications, and physical and electronic, including emails regarding any discussions on such project, whether such project was submitted officially or not. This letter from the city should be on city letterhead and mayor city sent as a PDF to the agency respective uh, for KORA office via email or as otherwise dictated by the agency. Item two, letter to the Kentucky Office of State Archaeology directs the city solicitor to draft an open records request uh, to the Office of State Archaeology to answer whether the KYOSA received a proposal or inquiry for the installation of bike paths or multi-use trails at Fort Hill by any person or entity, public or private, internal, external, between 2017 and 2020, to be reviewed for any potential impact to historic, archaeological, environmental, and natural sites on the property. And whether any inquiry regarding the insurance, the issuance of permits and site boundaries, or any other request was made, and if so, to provide copies of all relevant documents and communications, both physical and electronic, including emails regarding proposal or inquiry of KYOSA's review of that proposal or inquiry and KYSO's approval or denial of that proposal or inquiry. Also provide documents and communications, physical and electronic, including emails regarding any discussions of such project, whether such project was submitted officially or not, and any current or final disposition of such proposal or inquiry. This letter is from the city, should be on city letterhead, and the mayor signed, city manager, city solicitor should all be signatories to request that should be sent on the PDF to the agency respective to KORA office via email. Third, letter to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Direct the city solicitor to draft an open records request to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet to answer whether or not KYTC received a, a personal or a proposal or inquiry for the construction of multi-use trails at Fort Hill by any person or entity, public or private, internal or external between 2017 and 2020, to be reviewed for any potential impact to historic, archaeological, environmental, and natural sites on the property. And if so, to provide copies of all relevant documents and communications, both physical and electronic, including emails regarding the proposal or inquiry, KYTC's review of that proposal or inquiry, and KYTC's uh, approval or denial of that inquiry. Also provide documents, communications, physical and electronic, including emails regarding any discussions of such a project, whether such a project was submitted officially or not. This letter from the city should be on city letterhead, and the mayor and city manager and city solicitor should be all signatories to this request, which should be sent as a PDF to the agency respective KORA office via email, or as otherwise dictated by that agency. And finally, section four of the motion. Video analysis and documentation. Direct the city manager to come, to document by video at Fort Hill all evidence of these potential infractions and their impacts to the historic and archaeological sites and assets of Fort Hill. The final video, which will later be released to the public. I ask the city manager to include the city solicitor, parks director, and city historian on this video. I ask staff in Kentucky Heritage Council and the Kentucky Office of State Archaeology and/or volunteer archaeologists, along with archaeologist Jay Stotman, if they are willing to participate in this video for both making official determinations and the education in benefit of the public. That's the motion.
Thank you. Um, and do you have that written out so we can get that to the city clerk and the city's?
Yes, I presented that to the city, to the city clerk prior to the meeting to be, to be submitted in the record.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure in case somebody said, please restate the motion, she could.
She should, she should have it, uh, written verbatim. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, so motion by Commissioner Tippett. And, um, it does require a second, so is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Uh, second by Commissioner Sauer. Uh, any discussion? All right. No discussion? All right, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Oh, it was a great presentation, Scott. I'm gonna have to say no.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes, and, uh, that's quite all right, Ms. Ms. Walbridge, Commissioner Walbridge. We remain friends.
Mr. Wismann?
Um, yes. This is essentially a request for information, and given that, uh, federal funds have been used to acquire the park in the past, I think it behooves us to, to acquire all information. Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes, like to explain my vote. Um, very professional, extremely thorough, uh, Commissioner Tippett. Good job in doing so.
Mayor May?
How about yes and explain my vote? Um, thank you, Commissioner Tippett. That is the second best presentation I have ever seen made to this commission. This case is the best.
I'll, I'll shug, Mayor.
Uh, no, very good, seriously. Um, I'll take that side there.
Thank you. And Mayor, may I, may I speak? I cannot, I, I cannot take the credit for this outstanding research. And I, I can only say that I provided the initial impetus for the research. Uh, the credit goes to Mr. John Carlton, who has spent numerous hours converting these archives to PDFs. Uh, the thanks also go to the museum board for locating this box of archives that was actually sitting in a closet, drawing dust for probably 15 years. And it, he did, Mr. Carlton did a great service, at the very least, uh, of updating and modernizing news records, so future city staff can have, uh, access to institutional memory and, uh, have an appreciation for our community history. I, i- if nothing else comes in this motion, that is a good thing, that the staff has more information at its fingertips. Thank you.
Uh, city solicitor?
Just, just one quick question. Um, I'm, of course, happy to do whatever you all want. I, is there a timeline or a deadline that you all can put on this, uh, task for me, just to help me out?
I, I don't, I, I don't think we want to push you too hard, Ms. Ross. Uh, I do think, uh, the letters should go out in, you know, regular order, however that is for your office, you know. Uh, and I do think, though, the city manager needs to, to pull that committee together as fast as he can for the video documentation, because, uh, the, the damage is ongoing. Okay, and I am, I, I gotta tell you that when I saw the condition, those dry stacked stone fences, uh, like that, I, I was just, um, I don't, and I'm, I'm gonna lack the words, and I'm never gonna lack the words. Uh, that is just representative of central Kentucky. It's representative of the Bluegrass region. It's representative of our community. So, you know, and, and what I would go on to, to generalize a little further, Ms. Ross, you know, you, you are going to determine, uh, as you do this legal research with this, these archives, uh, what the legal status of this is. And it could very well be that it, it is, uh, a use that I would not prefer. But if that's the case, that's okay. We have the legal framework in place. Uh, and that's okay. So, at least we now can proceed with the best use of the park on the lea, on the proper legal footing, whatever that is. Thank you.
All right. Now to continue. Um, did we want Mr. Pickens to make a presentation, Mr. Russell?
Please, sir, on the fencing that, uh, at Fort Hill, Sean has got some information to share with you all.
All right. Um, Mr. Pickens?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
I think so.
Okay, yeah, um, after the commission directive, um, I did, uh, after receiving information from the Office of Archaeology from UK, that they provided the areas on Fort Hill, very similar to the map that you had just showed, Commissioner Tippett, um, that had outlined the sensitive historical Um that had outlined the sensitive historical and archaeological sites on the park, so they were outlined. Um, I then went up and measured um those areas as closely as possible. Um several of those areas overlap with heavily wooded areas. Um so I kinda had to skirt some wood lines and and do a few, you know, few odds and ends, but. Uh the best that I could determine via uh Google Earth mapping and distancing as well as onsite. Um with a measuring wheel, um I I've come to figure up about twenty-five hundred. Um linear feet of fencing, um that's straight line, um fencing would. Um would be needed to put a a fence around the three significant archaeological areas. Those are the two old farmsteads that are up there as well as Fort Boone and a new redoubt. Um, one of the, one of the homesteads overlaps um with Fort Boone, so. Um so those areas. Um would, would be where we're looking at the fence, the type of fencing that we are looking at is called split rail fencing. Uh it's very similar to the fencing that's up there currently, that's around the cemetery uh and around the Sullivan House. Um, so we're going to need, if we, if we move forward with split rail fencing, or better, better term for that would be snake rail. Uh because it zigzags, it's not a straight fence. Um and it's also much more common to the Civil War era, so it will fit in with the park and we already have that type of fencing up there anyway. Um so when I say we need twenty-five hundred linear feet, we're actually gonna need closer to four thousand linear feet. Because after the snake pattern, it's not a straight line, so. We're gonna need a little over four thousand linear feet of of logs that will have to be cut. Um, to kinda give that rustic feel that fits in with the park. Um, after receiving some quotes, I'm I'm still waiting on actual hard copies of quotes. Um but we're looking, do you want me to share what kinda cost range we're looking at?
I think so, it's fine.
Okay, alright, um the the other quotes that I've received so far. Um and they'll vary depending on exactly what type of wood we go with, if we go with a cedar. Uh or a pine or potentially a walnut, so there there's several different. Types of wood out there that's used for these fencing, so we're still narrowing down the details, but we're looking anywhere from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars. Um in that ballpark range, uh to be able to complete the fencing around the three sensitive areas on Ford Hill. Um, after meeting up there um with with Nicole Conkle. Uh who has kind of consulted with us as a, as a resident um archaeologist. Um I also met with Mr. Carlton uh up there as well, John. And Commissioner Wissman as well. Um, we just did a tour of the area and we all kinda came to the consensus that split rail or snake rail fencing is the best option to go. Uh on any archaeological site, um this is what was referred to me, um it's. It's a lot harder to, if you wanna dig a hole or dig a post for more traditional fencing, uh it's a, it's a longer process, you have to get permits. Um you have to be, uh different things you have to go through for more traditional fencing, if you dig holes into the ground, which obviously. You know, digging holes into an archaeological site is not the best way to go. Um, not to say it can't be done, it's just not the most preferred, so we all agreed that the snake fencing uh would be the best, it also matches up. With what we have up there currently on the other uh areas of the park, so we would be putting back in, you know, new fencing that matches with the current. Um, so. So what we're recommending is is the snake rail fencing, um approximately four thousand linear feet. Um will we have extra leftover, there potentially could be extra leftover. That is perfectly fine because there are other fencing up there, like I just mentioned, around the Sullivan House and the cemetery. Um that's in in bad shape in some areas, so any additional logs that we have left over. We can use to repair the current fencing that's up there or completely replace it if we have enough, or if we need to order more to replace all that, we can, so.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Um one, one last note, and we also, um this fence is is intended to be. Um a boundary marker and just a, just an identifier. To, it's not necessarily to be a prison fence to keep people out. Um it's more of just a boundary, um so people can identify, oh, inside this fence. There must be something very significant inside that fence, um that's, that's the main reason behind the fence, so.
Mayor. Uh yeah, thank you Sean, yes, I was just, you uh, I was just about to steal your thunder. Uh, as I understand it, the fencing is, the the protection that the fencing provides the sites is informational only. Uh and and signage that complements that uh is to educate uh. Folks who are, who are there as to why the site's important, but like you say, the split, the split rail fencing is not. To detain people from going over in there, it is just to delineate and educate, uh and some of my. Preservationists can, friends can correct me on that, but I believe that's the case. Mayor.
That, that's, that's what I have been, been told by folks as well.
Mayor, ma'am.
Commissioner Wissman?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Tippett, you're, you're correct, it. And um I was invited to go up with uh Mr. Carlton, Miss Conkle and. And uh with Sean and um in discussion of of that type of fence. Again, it would not impact the archaeological site, it is something that sits on top of the ground and truly the, the basis of it would be for interpretive. Um or a way to interpret the historic sites from the rest of the recreational area so that. Visitors would know exactly that there are some historic significant, historically significant uh archaeological. Deposits or something there and and in future ideally it would be paired with interpretive signage as well. Um but the fencing would be of the era and be able to show um sort of the, the impact of the site in that period of time too, so.
I think you could, um Mr. Russell.
Sean, that's uh, we have full rail split fencing up there now, do we not, sir?
Yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, and this is gonna be full rail also?
Yes, we, we plan to match the current fencing that's up there, so it'd be four, four rails high, yes, or about approximately thirty-five inches tall.
Okay, I I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that that was gonna be full rail, uh.
Mayor.
Who's, who's talking?
Me, here's truly.
Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead Commissioner Tippett.
Uh I'm sorry, uh but as I understand it, we, I remember we had a discussion about. The funds that we were receiving uh from the cell tower. Uh and those funds were to be de- dedicated to the maintenance of Fort Hill Park. So I believe tho- the funding that for this, these, these split rail fences, snake rail fences. Can come from, can be dedicated from that fund, that specific fund and not a drain on the general fund. As a matter of fact, those uh lease agreements and those easements were designed to provide for the maintenance of the park. So it would be a completely appropriate use of that fund for those fences.
Correct, Commissioner. Alright, did we have any? Any further presentation? Uh Commissioner Waldridge?
Oh, I don't have a presentation, I just had a question.
Question, go ahead.
Okay, um so I know that we spoke about this and and maybe Scott, you'll have those, these answers for me. With the cell, cell tower funds or maybe even Sean, how much money was in that again and what were the ramifications of that particular fund? It wasn't just for Fort Hill or was it stated in that contract just for Fort Hill, you know, um I was just. Sean, if you could share with me?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I believe, um. I believe it is stated in there, it is just for Fort Hill. Um for, don't quote me on exactly how it's stated, um I don't have that in front of me, but I do believe, yes, it is just for Fort Hill. Um Alicia in finance or even maybe Miss Ross um would know that for sure.
Do you know what's in that account?
How much money?
What was in that, like seventy thousand or?
Yeah, I wanna say roughly seventy thousand, uh just. Yeah, over the past several years, um two to three years, give or take, I I do not believe that much money has been spent out of there.
Okay, so do you think as, as the um Parks Director and we're now doing our. Master plan for parks, I'm I'm assuming you're taking Fort Hill into consideration in your master parks plan. Is this something that can be held off and, or do you see that this amount of funds could be used in a different way for Fort Hill, giving your. Uh completion of the master plan for parks?
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean definitely Fort Hill is gonna be a main focus of the master plan, it's. Master plan is focusing on all parks uh heavily. Um, to answer your question about can it wait, um yes, it could, uh wait for the master plan. Uh but also don't think it's necessarily detrimental if we, if we don't wait. Um, so it's just up to the, to, to the, to the commission on what direction we'd wanna go there.
Alright, any other, it's commissioners, I think Commissioner Wissman you had and then Commissioner Sauer. I think I was right, I, I'm not, I apologize, I'm trying to keep up with all the names, many numbers.
I was just gonna answer um a little bit more background information on the uh the fund that is available for. It is specifically for Fort Hill and it comes from the impact of the cell phone tower that was put on Fort Hill. Which in effect, through federal regulation, federal law, impacted the historic site. So there are these mitigation funds that these companies have to pay. Uh and the, the agreement locally was that so much would be paid per year indefinitely. And those funds have to be used on Fort Hill and of course they have been tallying for the last four years or or more. Um so those funds have to be used and generally are specifically tied to preservation and interpretation of historic resources. So it would be completely appropriate, um and actually fitting of of the regulation that this is the way the money is spent and or. Additional interpretive signs and preservation of, of the house and things like that that are on the hill.
Alright, thank you Commissioner.
Yes, um mayor, is a motion in order?
Uh yeah.
Um, I would like to move that the Parks Department in conjunction with the Finance Department. Uh solicit formal bids for the split rail fences. Uh and that they be budgeted from the allocation uh up to thirty thousand dollars. Hopefully it will come in lower than that.
Alright.
I'll second that.
Commissioner, second by Commissioner, okay, uh motion by Commissioner Sauer, second by Commissioner Tippett. And is there discussion?
Where's Abe Lincoln? We need, we need him in more ways than one, Commissioner.
Alright, um, we probably don't really want him chopping down any trees up there, but.
The rail splitter, mayor.
That's what I mean, yeah. Alright, um. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Waldridge? No. Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Mr. Wissman?
Uh yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, uh motion's carried, um next would be an update on Dolly Graham Park. And Mr. Russell, did you want Mr. Pickens to, to kick that off?
We will, he will uh, he will give you a, an overview of what we've done, we uh. Uh, went down and visited uh Dolly Graham uh to see what uh. We took staff down there to see what, if there was things that we could do to uh. Start work on Dolly Graham without uh taking a chance on uh. Doing something that would cause detriment to our grant that we're waiting on. I understand that a lot of people wanna see uh changes at Dolly Graham and uh we, we have come up with a. Kind of a plan to see what all we can address, uh Ms. Hall was down there. Um his uh Hacker was down there, Blair and Rebecca, uh Sean and his staff uh. And a couple of my guys, we went down to look at the park to see what we could do to start the project, so. When we get the grant funding, uh and we're not sure when it is, I think Rebecca was on the line to see if she had contact with. Oh, um, with the national, uh with the federal government. But we have come up with a plan on the things that we can address, I see her, uh without jeopardizing our grant, so that said. Uh Ms. Hall, did you, did you check on, uh did you check with the, the federal government?
Yes, our um. Our congressional delegation has not gotten back with me, but I'm guessing with the um conventions and. Elections and whatnot going on, this is probably not high on their priority list right now. Also did reach out to the National Park Service that had not heard back from them yet either. So I'll continue to keep um communications open with both those lines, but um and I'll let you guys know anything that I hear.
Mayor, I think Mr. Pickens can uh can co- can give you all uh what we looked at and what we discussed on, on moving forward with Dolly Graham.
Yes, uh thank you, yeah, we're, you know, as, you know, Tommy had mentioned, you know, we're, we're all. You know, hoping that this grant gets approved super quick, but we all understand that the current circumstances. And there are certain things that we can't move forward with, because our, our ti- our hands are tied currently, but. Um after, you know, getting some community feedback and being around Dolly Graham and listening to folks that. That live around that area, I'm, they're very passionate about their park and uh so are we, so. Tommy um really wants to see something moving quickly, so we, as he mentioned, we all met down there. And I feel like we've come up with a pretty good plan to get some things started down there. Um to spruce some things up, um add some color to the park. Uh get the community involved to help us down there, um so. When we met, we're, one of the, one of the key things is, um we are currently and uh Miss Hacker. Uh and Miss Hall with the city as well as Mr. Russell, um and myself, we are looking um for a professional artist. Um or somebody that lives in the local community that uh has, is talented artwork. Um or maybe a group of folks, um and get the kids involved and paint the shelter at Dolly Graham. Um one of the key focuses will be some type of a very nice mural, um that represents um the Dolly Graham uh area. And we're, we planned also add uh fresh, brand new uh lighting. I would assume we're gonna be looking at LED lighting uh for inside the shelter. Um we're gonna pressure wash it from top to bottom, um and as I mentioned, as I mentioned, paint, um do some lively colors down there. Uh the picnic tables that are currently just a, just a stained brown, um paint those, um very colorful. Um we're going to look um at other areas around and put in fresh landscaping, uh add fresh mulch. Um trim back a lot of the trees and try to trim back some of the river that's encroaching. Um, the, the forest along the river that's encroaching on the park, um add new bourbon barrels. Um with fresh landscaping inside of it. Um, also looking at, um. I mentioned, we're working with Chris Schimler with Remove Invasive Partnerships of Franklin County. Uh spoke with her today and she is willing to help um us and gather some volunteers to help. Um remove invasive species down there, um the ones that are prudent to remove at this time uh of year. Um we're also looking at organizing a volunteer day or multiple days. Um to help us um in that regard to, to try to get um input into the, from the community. And help us with some of these projects, um we can all work together as a team and move forward, so. We're hoping that these items and others that we, that we are determined along the way will. Um it's not the major renovation project yet, uh but it is coming. And hopefully this will uh help the park in the meantime while we're waiting. And we're, we're committed and Mr. Russell um is very committed. And um is, is pushing all of us hard to make sure that we uh, we do what we can for Dolly Graham uh in the meantime while we wait, so. That's, that's my spill on that, sir.
Thank you and thank you, uh Mr. Russell, for, when we, we talked about. It's been over two weeks and um I personally spoke to a member in the governor's office. It's been over two weeks and, um, I personally spoke to a member in the governor's office. And I personally spoke with with our US Representative Angie Barr personally on the phone and he's got his staff working as well and also spoke with Senator McConnell's field director. Um, earlier this month after it was called in my attention that there's some questions, I guess it's around, um, the 12th, 13th, that week of the 11th, 12th and 13th. And, uh, Mr. Russell, I talked last week, uh, or over the weekend, I can't remember whenever it was and his suggestion was to get down and and do what we could in the short term. So we appreciate our staff's initiative and and being uh, interested in and taking that action on there to to make it look a little better than it than it currently does. But understanding that this will be the largest renovation of any park, over five hundred thousand dollars. It'll be our premier, uh, playground and we'll have the new, uh, the newest playground equipment available and we had asked, we'd had two meetings with the community and I'd asked specifically for schoolchildren to be contacted. They took surveys home and I know Mr. Tippett's worked with, uh, folks and and church and in other places specifically. So we're looking forward to that again. Uh, we've made all the contacts. We've got staff calling. And I've personally talked to folks and they follow up on what to do with with the federal government to try to push that as soon as possible. Uh, I believe Commissioner Waldridge had her hand up first. I apologize if I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Tricia first, then may I speak?
Okay, because I it's hard to see. Sometimes I can't really see. I can see the difference.
Wisman had his hand up as well.
Okay, so I'm not sure who was first, but Commissioner Waldridge, you go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, I I think, thank you, Tommy. Thank you, Sean. I know, Sean, you and I have spoke over the probably the last year or so that I've been city commissioner and talking about how we can move Dolly Graham forward in support and what can we do that's not going to hurt our grant. So I'm glad to see finally there's some things being pulled out that we can do that's not going to hurt that. So I appreciate that from both of you guys pushing some of that forward and coming up with some ideas. Also, Sean, um, in this, the expenses, where is that going to come out of the money of where the property was sold? I believe Eric, did you say that the money from the, um, the plot that was sold will go over to parks? I can't remember what meeting that was. Is that correct, Sean? Um, the money from the sale was going to go over to parks. Would that money be available for this?
I I can't answer that for sure. I'm I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on that.
Yeah. Okay, I think that money, I can't remember exactly how much that was. Laura, do you remember how much the cost of that was? That would go over into help that as far as expenses?
I don't remember. Sorry, Commissioner.
Okay, no, that's okay. Thank you.
Can I answer?
Do you have to answer our question, Commissioner Wisman?
Yeah, I'll just remind everyone, it was the sale of the house on Curator Court at the end of Old Broadway Bridge, um, that we sold for, I believe it was eighty seven thousand dollars that we had, um, rolled into helping to pay for the master park plan.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, uh, Mayor, may I? Is it my turn?
I believe so. I apologize, folks, trying to keep up on the screen.
I know, it's hard and I don't want to step on it. I don't want to step on anybody if I am.
Go ahead, Commissioner Tippett.
Okay, I just, I wanted to commend Commissioner Waldridge, uh, she has, uh, she has lent her voice to this thing. You know, I I had the advantage of being on there two years before and you, Mayor, 10 years before, right? And, uh, we've all collectively, Commissioner Sauer, Commissioner Wisman, we've all collectively pushed that Dolly Graham thing hard. Uh, I I do want to thank everybody but Commissioner Waldridge, you know, she was, when we talked early on when she first came on, she she grabbed that baton and ran with it. So kudos to her. Um, and I'd also like to thank Mayor that, uh, when we include some of these, uh, folks who live in the area, who grew up in the area, uh, to to work with us on the park, I I'm thinking of Reggie Allen, former student of mine, former player. Reggie's a was an art student with my wife. Uh, I think we should put him on any kind, if he's if he's agreeable, uh, to, uh, help, you know, with painting or or murals or anything like that. We should really recruit these, uh, these folks who grew up around her, uh, for the artwork and that kind of stuff. That's, uh, I'm sure my wife has a good memory of those students. She could probably give us a list. Yeah, for 30 years.
Well, we did talk about that and and one of the things we talked about, Mr. Russell, I talked, um, early, like, was it today? The 24th, I guess it was last Thursday or Friday about maybe just having the artists draw out to the outline and let the let children, you know, fill in with color. There there's just different things we're gonna, we're gonna, and our staff's gonna work on that with with folks to, uh, to get that done. Commissioner Sauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, too, one who we don't want to, and I don't, I know you don't want to overlook, and and Sean is kind of new to the table, uh, but Derek Graham, we need to keep him apprised of all the wonderful things we are doing for his his mother's or the park that is named for his mother.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mayor, may I? Russell's on on it really well. He he's wanting to take action immediately. We appreciate that because this is something that, uh, going back, I think 2017, when we first put this project out there, when when folks came and to me and said, why don't we have, uh, a pool or something someplace else other than Jennifer Hills? And we looked at it, couldn't put a pool there, but we did the splash pad. That was an initiative and then it grew from there thanks to our our wonderful park staff. At the time, Mr. Mr. Parrish worked really hard with with the neighborhood folks to, uh, to get that done. So I know there's been a lot of folks that don't understand why it's taken so long. And again, I I guess the one question is if for some strange reason the grant doesn't come through, which I believe it will, I guess the commission, the commission would come back and I certainly would be all for doing, making an appropriation to make sure that everything is 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 carried out. And that was one question and Commissioner Wisman.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I understand everyone's frustrations with, uh, the delay. We've been waiting for over a year on this grant award that, um, that we were promised. And I I I'm sure it'll come through. Uh, one, um, thing I had heard was the department that was facilitating everyone's, um, stimulus funds are also tasked with with some of these grant funds. And so those priorities have been pushed back. Um, so we all understand that. But I I can't tell you how much I appreciate Mr. Russell taking some of my, uh, my thoughts uh, for this park and, um, and expanding those. But I wanted to, um, thank Sean as well and ask if Sean, if he's still with us. Now, my my understanding, there's there's been some comments in the last few days about the, um, the Parks Master Plan and the consultants going to different parks and and getting input. And, um, you know, I I I know that we are going to have many of those listening sessions, if you will, around the community. So there's no need to to get upset, um, potentially that that one part is maybe left out. Um, that we're going to have an entire series of those and and public input in a a number of, um, let's say, new fashions, uh, that aren't traditional because of of the pandemic. But, um, Sean, can you speak to, um, plans for additional, um, listening sessions, if you will, with the consultants?
Yeah, from from the get go, before they were even scheduled, um, it was clear to me that they had planned multiple um, sessions at multiple parks in person. Uh, most of this is because of COVID-19, because they cannot have, you know, large groups or your traditional community meetings. So one of the ways that they adapted to this was to have individual just just go to a park and just set up a small tent and talk to people at leisure. Um, you know, not necessarily have a group of 50 people all at once, but just as people were coming and going, the master plan consultants could speak with them, uh, on a, you know, on a personal basis and be a be a be a unbiased third party. Um, and they also, you know, said it wasn't a requirement, but they kind of traditionally, it's better if park staff is not at these very much because people sometimes feel reserved to not speak their mind as much as they would to a third party. Um, so that's kind of why we didn't have a large park staff presence at those meetings. Um, but we we certainly can moving ahead in the future. Uh, but there there will be multiple, um, feedback sessions just like these at multiple parks, including Fort Hill, um, including Todd Park in Bellevue, which there hasn't been one there yet, but there is planned. Um, so all the parks will be covered substantially.
And more than once, correct, Sean, will have, um?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, more than once. Yes.
Mayor, just, I want to thank staff and and the consultant for trying to figure out creative ways to continue forward with this this planning process. And I I just want to challenge the community actually as well to think bigger than existing footprints of our parks. Dolly Graham Park is, um, has always been limited in its view shed or even access to the river. And there's a lot of creative things that we could do in across our parks, but especially there. It's one of the only places that has, uh, fairly safe access to the water and in the entirety of our our downtown. But, um, I just encourage everyone to to look for those meeting times and and formats different ways that our consultants are working to, uh, to gain, uh, input in this process.
Commissioner, I'm not sure who was had it, Commissioner Sauer, Commissioner Wilson, I was looking at.
Go ahead.
Okay, no, I just wanted to add that, um, I actually attended the Coast Spring 8:00 AM session for the parks meetings. And I also attended the Dolly Graham meeting. And so, you know, back to what Commissioner, uh, Wisman shared, you know, not to feel left out, you know, I wanted to to share that comment. It sort of resonated with me because I was present at the Dolly Graham. This may not have anything to do with you personally, Mr. Wisman, because you've only been a city commissioner at the same time I have, so it's been a year and a half. So we do get a lot of backbite, you know, things from the community and anger from the community that you and I weren't privy to because we've just been commissioner, you know, for a little over a year and a half. And so I just want to make clear that it's not that they feel like they're left out. You know, it this has been going on for years. And so, you know, as I'm listening, all I can say is, you know, I wasn't commissioner then, so I didn't really have a say then. But, you know, other people who have been in these seats for a long time, they would understand, you know, like the mayor, he's been here for a while. So he understands, I don't know what the commission, you know, commissioners he's helped serve with, why they didn't maybe approve certain things from that park or upkeep that park. And so the community are very angry because they do feel like they're continuing to be left out. And some of these people feel like they've been left out since they've been toddlers on this. And now their toddlers are playing on this park and they're still fighting for it. So I just wanted to share that because I was there and they were truly upset, um, and very angry. And and Mr. Wisman, back to your comment also about the, uh, the river, there we I had a conversation with a couple of people there that are interested on how can we get down to the river safely? And how can that be safely even outside of park hours, you know, for people not to go down there and get in the water and swept away and we don't know that? But there were people that are very interested in finding a way down into that river, um, you know, for canoeing and to get more, um, you know, more people in that community as well as, you know, in the African American community, we are, we are known overall for a community that doesn't swim. And so to be able to help some of those kids be able to learn how to swim and navigate the water and things would be amazing. And I shared that with, um, a couple of people that are really trying to do some group things there. So I definitely agree with you there, but, um, I just really, I know it's a heightened time for them and it's just really, really frustrating. But I also want to add, Mayor, back to your point of saying that even if the grant happens to dissolve or disappear because of COVID or what have you. Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to say you may have made that motion to say that we're going to fund the park regardless if this fund comes through. And I think we've already voted on that. So the day one we find out if this grant is no longer in existence and dissolves, I want to say that you got a full vote on that, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Mr. Tippett, that we will pay for every cent to make this park get what they want.
Mayor, 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 excuse me, Scott. Is Ms., um, uh, Boyd on with us tonight? Is she with us, Finance Director?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, good. Just wanted to, you know, just want to give you a little history on that allocation. Uh, the this commission, and and for those who might be viewing tonight, this commission voted five to zero on February the 27th to allocate 250,000 of our money to match this grant. And that that 250,000 was to follow that grant. So if the grant, and we sure hope the grant is approved, but if it is not, we have sufficient funds to start. Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Just wanted to, uh, reinforce Commissioner Waldridge's point. Uh, I was pleading, uh, for colleagues on the previous commission that we served on, Mayor, to just write the check and I and you nodded your head in one of those meetings, you sure did, and it went nowhere. Uh, you know, I said, I said, and I believe what I said was it is time. You know, we the it is time for this community to just step up and write the check and invest in a part of the our community that's been neglected for, you know, if you if you go all the way back for 400 years, right? So, you know, what I would say is I understand, I understand the exasperation. Uh, and we've not invested its community in that area. Uh, you know, the the Tiger Grant did not go into East Second Street. It turned left at the bridge. Uh, and there's just lots of things for those folks to be exacerbated with. So, you know, I'm with you guys, you know, let's write the check if we have to. Thanks.
I want to go back and say too, like my long-term commitment in 97, I I think I became mayor in 96 and in 97, we did a, after the flood, we did the South Frankfurt um, flood wall project. And after the, um, at that point, we we did a complete redo of the playground equipment. There had been, I think that was when Mr. Brooks was here. I mean, it was when Mr. Brooks was here. And then, uh, someone talked to me about basketball goals. We added basketball goals. We did in fact add those, uh, basketball courts. At one point, we did some other additions and, um, like like you said, some commissioners just worked for it. And then in 2017, I met with Mr. Parrish after folks talked to me about the Aquatic Center. When we approved that, that we didn't have anything in in, uh, South Frankfurt. So, uh, Mr. Parrish and I talked about that. So we've been pushing on that, uh, to to get this project started. That's when it started and that was, uh, again, uh, I think 2017 is when we, when we, 2016 or 2017, something around there. I can't really remember exactly. I can go back in five because I will have, um, uh, but we should have those documents. But it it's been a priority for me, uh, and I know, uh, for for this commission and and it's not for us not wanting to do it. Again, we're tied to a $250,000 grant that I'm surely am anxious to get. I was called last October and advised that we were going to get the grant. And here it is again, you know, we're in August and, um, I again, I want to applaud, uh, Mr. Russell and our other staff for and Mr. Pickens for your willingness to go down and and do some of the things that, uh, that we're going to do. I'll I'll say too, I I sat in on a on a, uh, a seminar called Mayor's Institute on City Design. I was one of 12 mayors from around the country selected to go to, uh, Tulane University back in several years ago. And as an alumnus, I was able to sit on this other meeting in, uh, a few weeks back. And one of the things we talked about was doing what's called a neighborhood audit. And I already spoke with Mr. Russell. He said he was fine with this of a meeting with our police chief. And we go down and and, uh, Mr. Russell, my chief and myself will go do what I've suggested from the Institute, Mayor's Institute of City Design. Guidelines was to go down and look at areas in the neighborhood that we can do, not just in the park, but, uh, sprucing up, lighting all around the community. We, uh, Mr. Russell and I have both been out at night taking notes, looking at at places that could can have some, uh, additional lighting. We do know that the tree canopy blocks out the street lights in the park, but we can do, uh, lower level lighting. We've talked about that. And once, uh, once we get uh, into that more letting our staff get down and see what what they can find, we'll go through the community again and do it during the day and in the evening to look and see where areas can be improved upon to not just the park, but the whole whole area that leads to and from the park. So those are priorities and and I thank our, um, thank Mr. Russell for, uh, his initiatives and and wanting to do some of that to himself. Mr. Russell?
I don't want to tell my age, but, uh, Commissioner Sauer is probably the only one that knows that I attended Murray Street School first through the fourth grades when it was at 401, uh, the corner of Murray and Fourth Street. Um, but I fully intend to expedite this project to push this forward. But I fully intend to expedite this project to push this forward as fast as we can. Um, without wasting any more time, I don't see any reason for us to wait when there are things that we can do to start uh the initial improvement of the park. And if we get the grants, then we're just going to be that much farther along uh when uh we get the grant and the rest of it gets finished. So, thank you all.
You're welcome to thank you. And and going back to Murray Street, let me another, this is something that uh I know Commissioner Tippett and Commissioner Sauer remember too. Uh, you may, those of you remember when I was a bike racer back in the day, I was actually brought in as I was recruited to race on behalf of the Murray Street uh playground, that park before they had South Frankfurt Park. It was it was that Murray Street. And this is Brooks and and those folks asked me to do it. So I was kind of like a ringer uh brought in to uh to help on that. So it goes back, our our support for the community goes back many, many years, many years. I will continue to do that. And not just in this community, but other neighborhoods, we've been looking at other neighborhoods that that need help. Uh, Mr. Russell knows that uh we went out of Kentucky, Owen Town Avenue, checking on some things. We turned in some service orders on on lighting down there for uh for that area too. So we're we're looking out over and I know the commissioners uh all support this. This is a five oh five to zero. Five members of the commission all support this and we all support it strongly. And all five members of the commission are doing everything that we can within our authority to make it happen. And I know our staff is working very hard. And it may not seem like it sometimes because people don't see things, but I can assure you that our our Parks Department really wants to get that done. And uh, I think we'll see with the commission priority, we will do everything we can to make that make that happen. Commissioner Walters.
Yeah, I spoke with Tommy today and and I told him, I was like, I just would like to see the sign of Dolly Graham Park to be placed back. It was found in the middle of God knows where um it was taken. And I would just like to see it brought back. I'm not sure how we can bring that back, you know, if if it can be something and then make something larger. I would love it to be like you're entering into a big fair, you know, and make it bright and very colorful. But I would like something, I'm not sure if we can do it that big right now because we may have to take it back down for big items to go in and out for, you know, leveling and things of that nature. But I would like to see something right now to go in to re, you know, to show the name Dolly Graham Park now. Like I want that sign back up so we know and and show pride that it is their Graham's mother and show pride for their um park. So if we can put something up and then we'll think about something bigger for the opening of the park and stuff where it's be bright and big, I would love that.
I keep shaking my head yet. All right. Is there anything else on this item? Okay. Um, Bluegrass Community Foundation, uh, Mr. Russell has that you sent us an sent us an email today that showed the current status of of that fund.
I did, I did.
If I have any questions on that or not, since you saw the email, but if not, um.
And it shows the distribution of funds and uh we reached out to to all of the nonprofits. Uh, I believe Ms. Blair did. Uh, and these are the ones that applied and we we have saved a little bit of money just in case we came under a very difficult situation. Um, so that's kind of where we are right now. You can see what we've distributed. Uh, that's with the mayor and the judge's approval and three, three members off of the board from uh BGCF. So uh this still still shows that we've raised about twenty four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. We've distributed disseminated eighteen thousand three hundred. We got sixty two sixty left in that fund. Like I say, we're just kind of holding on in case something bad happened, like a COVID quarantine of the men's shelter or something like that, where we have expended funds to to feed the homeless here in the last two weeks. Um, and they just uh all got negative tests today. So I've got good news for them. They'll be open back up to the public probably Wednesday to start to start feeding. It gets my guys out of the food service business.
Is there any, if we get that information, does anyone else have any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Russell. And the next item is the COVID nineteen emergency timeline update of the uh Tommy, also Mr. Russell also provided that. I wanted to go back. There was one thing when when uh Mr. Russell was off, I guess it was in the uh in in January, I was at a meeting in the White House and we were there with uh the H Health and Human Services Secretary, uh CDC and others with with President, uh the President. And that day that was discussed on January twenty fourth. The uh one of my fellow mayors sitting next to me from Minnesota got a call and he got one of the cases. So that was right after, I think that was one of the first first cases in the country because the the first one, I think, was announced that earlier that week. Uh, so he's one of the first. Uh, we anyway, uh, we we've been talking about it. We were actually talking about it in January and then in February at our L E T C Local Emergency Planning Council and our Emergency Services Group. We we had a meeting on that and talked about it. And uh we've been involved from uh from January of twenty twenty in terms of that. So if you see the, I'm working on my screen, the uh state of emergency was declared on March the sixth. So if there's any questions, we our staff can answer those or I can answer. You know, I think that pretty much, I think with the exception though, did we change, did we put into effect the new parks guidelines today or is that going into effect tomorrow?
We have not. I was uh, we need to discuss that to see. I talked to uh Mr. Pickens about it today. Uh, I think it's the right thing to do with the rise in the positive cases here to try to limit uh some of our parks rentals to uh specific times, just so we can monitor those 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 places.
Okay. And we're gonna, you're gonna talk with staff tomorrow about which what the timelines are gonna be?
Yes, sir.
About that decision. And then I guess do we need to issue an executive order? Are we gonna do it administratively?
I think we can do it administratively. I'm I'm looking at Ms. Ross, but I I think that's a simple change in in times in park rentals.
Okay, because we already have guidelines on park rentals and that, I think, was cleared at the department level. Unless people, unless any commissioners object. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Um, I did. Um, I didn't get to watch the uh the entirety of the update this week. How many, Tommy, how many deaths do we have right now in in Frankfurt?
Franklin County, we had fourteen the other day. I just got an encrypted email, which is how I get my uh COVID updates from Franklin County Health Department. I don't know of another one, but we have had fourteen now uh to date and unless there was another one today.
Okay. Um, Mayor, back to your comment uh from your conversation in January and and speaking to all of these different mayors, you know, events and things. Is there any way that maybe you could do like um at our city commission meetings, have like a mayor's update so we know what meetings you attend and what kind of information you're bringing back from those? Because for me personally, like I saw, you know, COVID to me came, you know, almost out of nowhere. You heard about it in different places. But for you knowing in January, I just, you know, for the community, I'm not to scare a community, but just to help prepare a community, that would have been good knowledge to know that it, you know, there was one, you know, there was a case and and where that could go to prepare. So is there any way that we could get like updates on your meetings that you have, you know, and that you get pertinent information that could be, you know, pretty interesting to our community if possible?
That's what, yeah, we do that on the on the weekly update. All of that information uh that is pertinent to us is is always discussed on the uh the weekly updates, which are, I think we have those archived, right, Mr. Russell?
Okay.
Yeah. And back in that point in January was to say, let's go ahead and start getting ready to tell the staff, we need to start looking at this, this this is something on the horizon that is looming. And um we did discuss that, I guess, on the timeline and we made all that information uh public as soon as we could. And as I said, I
Thank you.
Part of the Harvard City Leadership Initiative through um gracious support of uh former New York Mayor Mayor Bloomberg with the uh with Harvard University Leadership and also Johns Hopkins uh Medical School, which is the leading um facility. That's we wrote very quotes on everything. And then, as I said, during our updates, some of the White House calls I've been on, I've shared that information. Again, we share that every week when it's pertinent. If uh if there's information that's pertinent, we put it out as soon as we get it. I mean, I think we've put out everything uh that I'm aware of. And Mr. Russell, have we missed anything in your opinion?
No, sir. I don't believe so. I don't believe so. Uh, one of my deputies and I discussed this today and might be a few minor things on there, but this is, these are the highlights of where we've been.
I guess for the foreseeable future, we'll continue during our weekly updates.
I agree, sir. Since our since our positivity rate, it keeps keeps climbing in Franklin County. Uh, the state may have leveled off, but but I'm concerned because of the positivity rate that we have, which is approaching one, you know, one percent, uh, which nobody thinks that's high, but you know, it is. And uh with the advent of uh fall sports, spectators, school, uh, we need to keep pushing this message out there, sir.
And I believe we were one of the first cities, were the first communities in Kentucky to do the declaration.
We did it on the twelfth and I was thinking we that I would have a month before we saw the first case, but that wasn't that was not, that did not come to fruition. We we got a case right off the bat.
And just to say too, although we did, we declared the disaster and the declaration on that day, we were working on it uh as early as as January and February, we had our local emergency planning meeting to all the agencies that were involved to to start putting our plans in place that um and to review our emergency operations plans that we already have in place that we instituted. Uh, anybody, Commissioner Walters?
Um, Tommy, so on the numbers that are rising here in Frankfurt, and you said, I think we are pretty close to that one percent. Um, do we show any um any like certain areas or were there events that, you know, where 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 are these cases coming from? And is there a way that we can prevent them just, you know, washing our hands, of course, wearing masks. But was there an event? Is it one area of town? You know, what are we looking at? Or is there any information that, you know, that makes that it's going, that it's being spread in a certain way, I guess?
That that's an excellent commit uh question, Commissioner Walters. Um, the scary answer for me is the fact that a few weeks ago, uh, some of those cases were coming out of long term care facilities or maybe a month ago. All of my uh correspondence now with Franklin County Public Health and Ms. Judy Mattingly, who does a wonderful job. They are community wide. I'm telling you, every address from the east side to the north side to the south side. I I am a lot, I am more than a little concerned, let me say that, uh, because it is not tied to one event. It is not tied to one long term care facility. I think we're up to, I can't remember the number now, but we were looking at doubling last month. We had a hundred seventy eight last month. We're up to well up to two hundred fifty or something like that this month or three hundred, something like that. So uh, but it, no, there is not one specific thing we can target.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, just gonna ask Tommy if you have some recommendations while we're on the topic for the public. Wear your masks, wash your hands, any other stay vigilant advice?
Six feet, six feet and two inches. Everybody needs to know what six feet and two inches is. Uh, Commissioner Sire probably used to be that tall or Commissioner Tippett, but gravity is a terrible thing. So uh, and I used to be almost that tall. So everybody needs to understand what six feet is and maintain that distance. That's the biggest help in the world as far as I'm concerned. If you don't like to wear a mask, stay farther apart.
All right. And we remind everyone here, everyone has a right not to wear the mask, but please remember that businesses and uh grocery, any any type of uh public place has a right to refuse service because we do have a statewide suggest, well, mandatory mask uh requirement. And some of the stores have initiated their own corporate policies. So keep in mind, it's your right not to do it, uh, but it's also the right of the store owners and business owners to to refuse service. And remember, if you don't want to do it for yourself, please do it for uh your your family and loved ones and those people in the community who may have compromised the commune systems from dealing with certain illnesses or they have other uh life threatening situations that uh put them at risk. So please think of others and and uh please, 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 please listen to these these recommendations. Uh, this is not a joke. It's real. And anyone who doesn't take it seriously, uh, it it's not going to be good. And we just ask that you think about others. And and again, thanks to all of our uh emergency uh management team who's working. Uh, a lot of times we're working almost around the clock. Somebody's already always always doing something every hour of every day and on the weekend.
Mayor.
Commissioner Walters.
Um, I had spoke with Tommy um a little while ago, I guess. And so I bought masks myself that I've been handing out. Um, I think I actually gave a few masks actually to Lisa Unger's grandmother the other day at the event we had at City Hall. And uh she just said it was really hard sometimes to find some mask for her and maybe some of our more senior uh levels, you know, they can't really afford some masks. So is there any way in a COVID fund that we could purchase some masks that can be picked up or, you know, be given to some of those senior level, you know, senior areas, I guess. I don't want to say old by all means, but more seasoned people, individuals in our community or people that just can't afford masks or whatever. Is there any way that we can use some code funds to do that? I know I spoke with Tommy about it, but I'd like to maybe see that happen where we can do that.
Right. We did. We already talked, I think we ordered some from um I'm trying to think the vendor's name.
Oh, did you order them, Tommy?
We did a while ago.
Oh, good. Okay. Cause we didn't, we talked about them a few weeks ago. It's been a while, but okay, great. Good.
Yeah, we we got another five hundred. We've got several masks in that uh would be available to the public. I've just kind of waiting on direction on if you all wanted me to go up and go on and come up with a plan to distribute them or or what we wanted to do and how we want to do that. But I wanted to make sure that you all okayed that before I I even started that.
That's right. Well, I appreciate you going ahead and ordering those. Um, and um, because we did talk about that a while ago. But um, yeah, I mean, I don't know how we could do that in a safe way or if there's a pickup or how we do that or, you know, have them, you know, at the homeless shelters for some people or, you know, maybe drop some off at the senior. Um, I know I do Mills on Wheels on Monday. Um, so that's my date for delivery. So maybe some people that may need them, maybe they can send them with their meals with those individuals um at the senior citizen um for Mills on Wheels. I'm not sure, but that's just a couple of ideas.
I think I already authorized the expenditure on that, didn't I?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's totally good.
Thank you, Tommy. I appreciate you.
You know, public transit is another good way to get those things out.
Yeah.
I'll get with staff and we will come up with a plan uh to distribute uh as many masks as as the requests are.
Thank you for moving forward with that. I appreciate that.
Full faith in you, Mr. Russell.
Commissioner Wissman.
I just said I have full faith in Mr. Russell's ability to to do that effectively.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we did. Uh, which name the company? I got the email from um, it's Frankfurt Company.
I can tell you if Ms. Ross says it's okay.
Oh, you know what? Let's don't. You're right. Good point. It was a local company that had reached out and and we we bought those to try and I don't know if we got logo printed on them. We see them with that print. Okay. All right. Um. Next item, discussion of affecting city manager's salary.
Just uh, Mayor, uh, in our agenda, maybe we could conclude with that and go ahead and do the sidewalks and the
Oh, sure.
Appleview Park and and go ahead and do the sidewalks and the Capital View Park and conclude with the city manager.
If there's no objection, we'll skip to number 11.
So yes, I talked with Sean Pickens. Sean, are you still with us?
He's still on there. Yeah, yes, sir, I'm here.
We talked a little bit earlier today and and you might go ahead and give them your report, so to speak.
Yeah, just a brief update. All the projects down there that are currently active are moving forward quite well. The the lights, the old lights are in the process of coming down. The Frankfurt Plant Board was there today and are in the process of removing the old lights and the poles. Musco Lighting plans to be on site this Thursday with the new poles and the new lighting. And depending on weather, I know we've got tropical storm Laura. It looks like it's heading in hard direction right about that time period. But the weather may slow us down a little bit, but we are looking at lights being added. It sure is looking like as long as we're keep going the way we are. By soccer season, which begins September 8th, we will be very close to getting the light project completed. There may be some cosmetic issues from from trucks, some equipment, this and that that we have to touch up that may take a little longer. But so that the lighting project is moving forward. Also spoke with Mr. Hogston this morning, and I believe the shovel is meeting the dirt as we speak on the sewer project. So that is moving forward. We're also looking at, let's see, let me check my notes here.
I believe you reported earlier that the composite wood and.
Yes, you're correct. Yeah, the deck, the deck on the press box, that's been completed. That was the deck was in pretty bad shape and was a hazard and needed to be replaced. So that that has been completed as well. Also, the baseball fields and softball fields, this has been completed a while back, a couple of months ago. But the the current lighting had been repaired over time, weather, just the age of the equipment, the baseball field's lights were in bad shape. So with in conjunction with the plant board, they helped us to repair those. So we should be good to go for for this season, which is obviously limited with COVID. But those repairs have been made as well there. Also, lighting repaired to Puget and Sullivan Fields, which are in the lower part of the park. I was just speaking about Legends of Williams, which is on the the upper end of the park as well, so.
Sean, it looks like we might have an American Legion team forming. Could you tell us about that and who to contact?
Yes, American Legion, for those of you who may not be completely versed on that, it's it's for older for older kids. That's a little too old for recreational ball, but is also looking at potential college play. In a lot of places in Kentucky and around the US, it's kind of died out. And that was the case for Frankfurt for a long time. There just wasn't enough kids to field a team. There was just a just a gap there. But Mr. David Kamak, who sits on the Parks Advisory Board, is a big baseball buff. And he, along with some other folks in the community, have band together to try to bring American Legion baseball back to Frankfurt. I don't remember the exact date that American Legion was last held in Frankfurt, but it's been several years. It came out in the newspaper article with the more correct dates. But so American Legion is looking like it's making a comeback. So that's good news for the for the older youth of the community.
They quit playing after Scott graduated, I believe.
Probably did.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Tommy, go ahead.
Actually, I had I had already told, I noted to Commissioner Tippett that he was going to be next, but but.
I can defer. Go ahead. I just really wanted to thank Sean, Director Pickens. I know he feels like he's getting fired on from everywhere. We're pushing him hard to get these projects completed. All I would say to my colleagues and to the public is, you know, the five of us, we were elected with a mandate. And that mandate was was to take that $18 million surplus, figure out how much of that money we could safely reinvest in the community into transformational projects. And we're doing it, okay? We are doing it. You know, I think, of course, I'll digress a little bit. I coached David Kamak years ago. He may not want me to say that, but I did. He was a great guy. I think we are, it is incumbent upon us to fulfill the mandate the voters gave us. Okay, they wanted us to improve the quality of life of the community. And by George, we're doing it, okay? And it's we ran it, we've run into some, you know, some opposition and some pushback on it. But what we are doing, and I can say I can speak for all my colleagues, every one of us, we we really care about this community and we want to provide this community with the with the greatest milieu of potential recreational sites we can and the best infrastructure we can leave them. And I'm just, I know I'm editorializing a little bit, but every day that's left in my term, I'm going to seek to fulfill that mission that the voters gave me. And I think you guys probably agree with that and will join us. Thank you for letting me editorialize.
Okay. Commissioner Walbridge, you have your hand up?
Yes, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask Sean on the project is now moving forward. What is the timeline? I know you said that hopefully it would be finished by September 8th before those games. Do you know how much destruction that's going to be on their field? I've spoken with Joe Hammack, Hancock, Joe Hancock, a couple of times. And he's just really concerned for their soccer season, for these lights going up, you know, and damaging the field where they're not going to be able to play. And they've been told right now that they have to play on the other field. So what will that will that hurt their season? Are we going to, I know the storm's coming through, we can't handle that. But do you really think we're going to get that done before their season? And what does that look like as far as damage of the field?
Yeah, yeah, the tropical, if they're going to call for the rain that we're looking at getting for us, not going to help matters. If we're lucky and that misses us, we should be okay. I would feel fairly confident if weather was not a factor that we could have the lights completed by September 8th and fully operational with minimal damage to the fields. With the weather is a wild card and could put a damper on this depending on what happens. But so that that will that'll be hard to say. That's that's the wild card in this factor. We have met extensively with the athletic director from Frankfurt. Mr. Russell met with us today and we had a lengthy discussion about their soccer season. Mr. Peach, their athletic director, Joe, he, you know, we explained to him, you know, those challenges that I just spoke about. And they they are completely satisfied with our plan of, they may have to shift fields, you know, play a game or two on sour two. They said if worst case scenario, they would play on the pack if they had to, but we don't anticipate that being necessary. So I feel like we have a good plan with Frankfurt High as well as us. And I think we'll be okay moving forward. But that being said, there's always the the wild card of the unforeseen circumstances that pop up that could delay us. But I think we're doing everything in our power to get this done in time for soccer season.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, he and I had a lengthy, several little conversations, but I also suggested that he could work with the other schools to see when they weren't using their turf fields, that maybe they can move to their turf fields. And I wasn't sure if Kentucky State actually had their turf field lined for soccer. And maybe that can be another out for them as well. But I'm not sure, since they don't have a soccer field, I'm not sure if they would do that. But that may be something because Kentucky State did cancel their football season. So if they did have a stripe for soccer, then that may be a great place for them to do soccer. So that may be something, maybe you can help with the navigation of that with them.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's striped for soccer, but I don't know that for a fact.
Mister, may I, Mayor? I would just say the lobbying and the influence of the sitting, a sitting city commissioner with those entities probably would go a long way.
All right, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, one thing that we need to discuss, Mr. Pickens, we the the trailer down there that we used to have a police officer live in for security and things of that nature, that thing has become irreparable, let me say that. It has fallen into severe disrepair. We would like to remove that trailer from the site and then present plans to put in another pavilion or something like that or or utilize that space. And it's a, I don't know exactly how big it is, and I apologize for that, but to utilize that space for something else. When I talked to Mr. Hogston about his sewer project, there was going to be a pump station that's set right at that house to pick up that that effluent and push it up the hill. But if we remove the house trailer, then all he has to do is put a tee in there. And if we come back with something that has restrooms in there, then we're that far along. All we have to do is plum that site. But it's open to, it would open us up to to putting something else into place down at Capital View Park. Staff has gone in, looked at the trailer, and they've they've assured me that it is beyond repair and not worth the money. So I would like to, I would like your all's blessing to remove that or or take it to the dump or do whatever we need to do with that. And then start work on a project to to put something else back in there that would help the park.
Okay, are there any objections to the to that recommendation?
I think that's a good move. Frankfurt, right.
Mayor, that's okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, we, in meeting with the master plan consultants, we toured every single park and we did a significant, we did a complete tour of Capital View as part of that. And we toured that old house area that Mr. Russell was speaking about. And they've already got that earmarked as a a great location for some type of a shelter or a playground or some type of an outdoor adventure complex or something else to be put in down there. Capital View, if you're not playing some kind of a ball sport or riding a bike, there is nothing else for you to do down there. You can play baseball, softball, or shoot basketball, or ride a bike, or hike. Other than that, there's nothing for kids to do. So that area has been has been initially, now they're still, you know, in the master plan, but that area has been, you know, located as one of the potential great spots for improvements at that park.
Question, Mayor.
Question.
Tommy, Tommy, does that, does that trailer have any value at all?
No, sir.
So we couldn't just, we couldn't see if somebody would just come pull it off for us?
We could try to get it pulled off. I'm not sure it'll stay together, to be honest with you. If Public Works can scrap that or what do we need to do? That's probably what needs to happen to that thing.
All right.
I have one. So and and I'm trying to picture where that trailer is. And it's to the left of the softball fields, right?
Yes.
And so I guess my only concern, I guess it's my only concern would be, and maybe you can help, you know, make that better. There's a sinkhole back there that's not in a very traveled area. So right now, there's a trailer where people shouldn't go back in there. But is that going to be too close to, you know, have a lot of people start traveling over there for that sinkhole? Or, you know, are we looking at that that would get more people back that way? Or is that off? I can't really picture the trailer right now in that sinkhole.
Yeah, it, the the sinkhole is relatively close to that trailer location. So when we, when we do develop that area, if we develop that area back there, according to the master plan, we will address that sinkhole with with either protective fencing or filling or filling in the sinkhole properly or some some form of fashion will need to address the sinkhole, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's on there because I know with Craig Blanton, we talked about that and he had an aerial and that sinkhole was pretty large. But I just don't want to, you know, say we're going to put something to draw more people that way if we're not going to address that problem first. So thank you.
Yeah, there are several other sinkholes on the property. That one just kind of stands out like a sore thumb.
Right, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I'm trying to look. You're now you're spread out all over the screen again. I don't know why y'all keep changing. Anybody else? All right, so do we? Mr. Russ, would it be cleaner if we made a motion to declare that trailer a surplus if it needs to be surplus?
We can do that. We can, we probably do need to surplus it and we'll need to do the order along with it.
Okay, I'm just going to tell everybody, so before you do anything, just let us surplus it. I know it sounds crazy, but even if it's in poor condition, we have to be very careful about disposal of of public property. So we'll do that on next agenda or well, whenever you can get together. I know staff is busy, so that's certainly not the highest priority right now. But again, safety, of course, we can take action on that in an emergency fashion if we need to. But just scrap it, we'll go ahead and just wait till we get that. Or is that okay, Mr. Russell?
Mayor, may. Sorry, this is Kenny Holsten.
Oh, I was gonna, I'm looking on the screen, it's like nobody's lips are moving. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Just to give you an update on the sewers out there, we delivered some equipment today and started clearing our our path for our construction. At about 9:30 this morning, we got our final approval from the Division of Water to complete our project. So we will start moving forward and delivering pipe this week. And after the rains from this, the hurricanes this weekend, we should start construction fully next week.
Thank you for doing that, we appreciate.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, next item will be sidewalks. This was number two on the consent items. This is to extend the contract to the ADE and AEP Enterprises for one year. Commissioner Sire, you asked if that to be removed. Did you have questions?
Yes, just a question. Katie, you still on board?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
And I apologize, Katie, I meant to call you earlier today and one thing got in front of another and I just didn't make this call. The 250,000, I see it's available in the municipal aid account. Is that the same amount that we used last year?
It is, yes. That's our standard annual amount that we spend, yeah.
And one of the areas that you and I have talked about was the area of Langford. And at one time, Katie, you were telling me, well, I'll try to work with transportation first because the existing sidewalk was destroyed when they made a very nice entrance to Langford Avenue. And I don't know, I don't recall how that turned out. Did it, how did that go, Katie?
That sidewalk has still not not been replaced. So that is certainly something that we can do with this contract if we add that to the list.
Okay, that would be wonderful since we've been working on it for a while. And I guess, I guess that's all.
All right, thank you.
How are they prioritized? Katie, just like a street? How are they?
Yes, we we typically use our work order system to document complaints. And so we'll start there with any complaints that we've received. We also try to group things by area, by neighborhood when we can. And we go through and and fix toe trippers where we can with concrete cutting or grinding. And then we go back and fix the bigger problems with sidewalk replacement.
Great, and are we expected to do all of that this year?
We are planning to spend the 250, is that what you mean?
This calendar year?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Other members of the commission might have sidewalks that they know of in their particular area.
Commissioner Walbridge?
Yes, I was just wanting to add, and that was one question I had was that follow up was, you know,
Yes, uh, I was just wanting to add, and that was one question I had, was a, that follow-up was, you know, what takes priority? But also, I would like on that list out toward, um, Silver Lake, I think it is. Um, we never really replaced the, uh, there's like a small strip there that wasn't replaced after some construction. And they're, they're having crossing issues. I think even the light there, the walking light is like off from the, the main light there. But some of that, that, um, sidewalk was not replaced, and so there's a couple of people that's had some issues with that and they would like that sidewalk replaced now that the construction is finished.
Okay, is, and that's on the Georgetown Road?
Yes, yeah, but still in the-
Silver Lake, okay.
Hey, uh, Mayor May.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yeah, uh, Katie, I don't know, uh, there was really a bad stretch of, of, uh, sidewalk over there on Taylor Avenue. Uh, I, I don't know if we ever got to that or not, I know it was, it was on the list. It's on the right side going toward the bridge. Uh, uh, i- if you recall that, not, I don't know, but it was really-
I do, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I, I do remember discussing that.
Uh-huh.
And I don't believe that it's ever been repaired, but we can certainly add that to this year's list.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Waldrich?
I'm, sorry, it wasn't about sidewalks, it was about parks, sorry.
Okay, we can, we can go back to parks.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the contract extension then.
A second.
Moved by Commissioner Wissman. Second by Commissioner Sauer, I'm sorry. I said that because he was, in the corner of my eye, he, Commissioner Waldrich.
Okay, we sound alike, right?
Not, no.
I'm much older.
Oh, sorry. I just looked up on this, looking at the note, okay. Any discussion? The name, Corquay, Colorado.
Mr. Waldrich?
Yes.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wissman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yeah. You're all, just so you'll know, you're all in a big screen in front of me, when somebody moves, my eye kinda looks at it and I just look, look. All right, so let's see, we are back at-
So my part question, Mayor, I'm sorry, just gonna throw it out there. And I know Lakeview, of course, is a county park, but I've had several city residents complain. I don't know if Sean can make, you know, make contact with them, but apparently they're not doing social distancing out there. And there are no hygiene products out there and our city, some of our city people that are going out there, um, are really bothered about, about that and their safety. So if there's any way that we can sort of reach out and see what's going on out there, there's different baseball teams, I think, that are playing out there that are not Frankfurt-related teams, I guess. And so we just wanna make sure that our city residents, when they're out there, they do have the toilet paper and napkins and all of that that they need for good hygiene. If Sean can just follow up with them, I know it's not our part, but our residents are being, um, you know, I guess in danger could be as far as COVID. Tommy, I'm sorry, I see your hand, you have, you know.
Yes, they already, they already addressed that from some stuff that happened this weekend, correct?
We, uh, my, my two deputies are following up on that, we're, we're looking into the after, after, in the afternoon crowds, uh, on ball teams, we've spoken with David Kamak, who, who sets a scheduling for the fields out there, so we are, we got on that today.
Thank you.
All right. All right, the last item is number ten, discussing of the acting city manager's salary. And, um, I know we've had a few days, uh, for Mr. Russell to be on, on the job and will entertain any discussions, I don't know how to really, how to really start that, if anybody wants-
Mayor, do you want to, uh, since it's personnel, go into executive session?
I don't think we can do that for salary, unfortunately.
Oh, okay.
We'll just have to-
I, I have a question, Mayor. Um, Mr. Interim City Manager, you don't have any plans to take a vacation queen now in December, do you?
No.
Mr. Tippett, I will be here until you all name a permanent city manager.
Well, um, I, I, I think that was one of the concerns, uh, that, that might be too big of a perk. And, uh, I don't know about that question, uh, I've known you a very long time. I've seen you run into burning buildings and, and save people. I've seen you pull people out of wrecks and save their lives. I've seen you go above and beyond the call of duty so many times. Uh, and I know you work ten, twelve, fourteen hours a day. Uh, and quite frankly, uh, that, that question sort of puts me off. Uh, no, as a matter of fact, it does put me off. It insults me and I, and I'm not the person being asked of it. Uh, you know, um, I, I think we asked a lot of you. I think you perform well. You have retired. You don't have to take on this added burden and this extra stress. Uh, but you choose to do it because you love your community, and I know that, Tommy. And they're, you know, there are naysayers out there, buddy. They're out there a lot, but, you know, if they understood how you have answered the call of duty time and time again, and I've seen it since you were in high school, there would be absolutely no question about your legitimacy and your dedication to the community and how well you should be remunerated. And I think is, what you should be remunerated is, is just like any other city manager would be remunerated. Uh, and that's my soapbox. And, uh, thank you for answering the call of your community, you didn't have to do this.
All right, any other? Any other comments? Will they, will, we have to, we need to make a motion tonight to, uh, technically do that.
Mayor, if I may, I agree that, um, Mr. Russell is one above any expectation I would have for, uh, for staff in the situation we're in currently. And, uh, thank him very much, and I, I, I don't believe there should be any difference in, um, Mr. Russell performing currently as, as our past two city managers were hired. Um, so, um, I think it's logical to, uh, bridge the gap between Mr. Russell's current salary and that of, um, the beginning salary of our most recent city manager, if that would be amenable to everyone.
Needs to be commensurate, I think.
Okay, um, I'm not actually sure what that salary was. Um, you said the beginning salary?
Uh, that's the one that stepped out to me, I believe that was a hundred and forty thousand a year annually.
Okay, I wanted to be sure, wasn't it like thinking about, uh, I'm talking like pay grade versus, um, actual salary?
Not sure how we best do that with the, uh, situation of, of an additional employment position. If that would be a grade change or a, um, I suppose before I make a motion, that's for the-
So, so I have a question.
Line with us.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have a question, and I, I'm not sure if HR is on, but what was the, um, as far as other interim city managers, were there pay? I know that he, that our manager was being paid from two thousand nineteen to eight twenty twenty, a starting salary of a hundred and forty, and then there's an ending salary. Was there a salary there as far as him being that interim? What was the salary he was when he was interim?
Is this field?
Yeah, I'm on the line. Uh, well, he was serving as interim, he was receiving the pay he had in his job as Public Works Director plus an additional eighteen percent of pay, which equated to six hundred and ninety-six, uh, dollars per pay.
Okay, so I think, and so what would that be for pay, um, added on to his salary, I, is that, that doesn't equal to one forty as a starting salary, does it?
No.
Okay, so, where, so he was eighteen percent. Um, and so you would take his salary from the position that Parker was in. What was that? Do you have that?
Uh, I don't know his exact salary that he was receiving in that time, but I'm gonna guess that that salary plus another eighteen percent of pay probably put it around the hundred and fifteen, maybe thousand mark in that neighborhood.
Yeah, I read in your documents, and I appreciate you sending these few documents, but, you know, I, I just, I think that, um, you know, he is interim and he has, also has the director, and I think that we can move that salary over with an eighteen percent raise as we did with the other interim, the, the most recent interim, which was Mr. Parker. And then we did move him up to a higher salary when he became full, um, interim. I think that we should still follow that same pathway, um, for that as well, for this interim as well.
Mayor May.
Um, Commissioner Wissman?
I, I completely disagree with Commissioner Waldrich, um, for the fact that it, we're comparing, uh, great differences. We have typically in the past had department managers who are already in accelerated salary, then move up to the, um, the city manager interim position. Uh, Mr. Russell is restricted by a nine-month commitment of, of work um, in the current position that is at a much, much lower rate. So, um, I, I don't agree. Um, Mrs. Fields, what would, uh, what is the difference in, um, rates or, uh, categories currently of, uh, the city manager position generally and, and Mr. Russell's, do you have that as, as emergency management?
Mr. Russell is currently making forty-one dollars and twenty cents an hour. And-
I meant the category, Miss Fields, the, uh, the-
Pay grade?
Pay grade, yes.
There, there actually is no pay bands for seasonal employees.
Okay, thank you, you answered my question?
All right.
I mean, I, I just think, oh yeah, sorry, I just think that we need to look at those numbers a little closely and not just to make, and not make a huge jump to a salary of a city manager, he is interim. And I mean, in the time that Keith was an interim, I mean, Laura was our co-interim, so, and, you know, there wasn't a pay grade there, so I just think, um, we do need to think about these numbers appropriately and, and look at those and not really just jump to a huge number because then you're, we're setting the precedent for anything that happens after, um, Mr. Russell leaves, you're setting a precedent for the next, you know, city commission to do whatever with the city, um, you know, city manager, or later on to say, you know, we're struggling to get to that high point, which is a salary for a city manager, not an interim. So that's, I just think we need to look at those numbers better. I agree, you know, I think with the pay grades and him being nine and, and things, that we can look at those numbers. But I think it's absolutely, um, I think that's a huge jump, just all the way to a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a full-time, um, for, for just an interim, so. And I think it's gonna put us in a bad position if we do that for one interim and then all the others moving forward would also need that as well. And so I don't wanna put us in a financial bind there.
Mayor, I have a question.
Uh, Commissioner Tippett?
Um, when we hired, uh, Mr. Parker, did not, didn't we, uh, step him back just a little bit from Ms. Steinhauser's salary? I believe she was at a hundred and forty-seven.
I believe so.
And we, we started Mr. Parker out somewhere in the high one thirties, right? And then he, then he stepped up, one forty?
Yes.
Uh, what, I, I, I'm not, I'm not good at math, what percentage is that?
Um, Scott, so Cindy started at one forty, so did Keith Parker. Cindy ended pay at one, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. And Keith's salary was one hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
So, I'm, I'm just suggesting whatever, whatever the percentage was that we set Mr. Parker back from the Steinhauser's fencing would be a nice round percentage to start Mr. Russell at for four months. Just a suggestion.
Well, I wanna say too, um, we're in a different time than we were there this, with, with, uh, the economic of situation that we're in in the country. The civil unrest that's going on and the COVID-nineteen emergency that's going on, this is a much different time than anybody's ever dealt with, so, uh, I'm absolutely for paying as much as the commission is willing to, to go. And if, if we started both at one forty, that's correct.
So are we paying, we're paying him to be interim, so you, you mentioned the unrest and, and the COVID. So we're paying, so we're paying him to do the interim city manager position. But you mentioned things that fall not just with interim, uh, city manager, but things that fall under his title for emergency management.
I'm the same, with, with everything going on, we have a lot of other things going on besides just, um, just those emergencies. That, that in addition to what, the everyday stuff that goes on with trying to make sure, uh, we're getting, uh, projects like the Dollar Grand Park done and, uh, those types of things, sewer upgrades that we've got going on, that we should be taking different, uh, thoughts and the consideration that others have not dealt with before.
So, are, are you saying that we should have thought about giving Keith a, a raise? Because he's dealing with Tiff and he's dealing with, uh, the Second Street corridor and all this other stuff?
No, the point being, if Mr. Russell's gonna deal with all those same things on top of everything else, he should easily, uh, be paid the, the same.
Okay, well, obviously, you guys already know how much you guys want him to pay, you've already had that meeting, so you can go ahead and move it.
Commissioner, I resent that remark. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, remunerate Mr. Russell at a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, um, in consideration of his existing, um, position as emergency management director.
Yes. My Commissioner Wissman, have you made a second, Commissioner Tippett, that was your answer for?
Uh, we need to make a, we need to get, I, 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 we need to have a second so we, I haven't heard anything from Commissioner Sauer. Uh, I, I'd like for him to weigh in on this discussion.
Mr. Wissman, Commissioner Wissman, can you, do you mind if we open?
I'll send.
Until Commissioner Sauer has a, uh-
Yeah, nobody's gotten together, uh, Commissioner Waldrich. Uh, I often try to seek compromise and, uh, perhaps, I don't know, if, uh, a hundred and thirty-five would be a compromise.
Here's what I wanna say too, nobody has more years of service than Mr. Russell with our community.
That's true.
And, um, no city manager has had the level of experience that, that I've served with that Mr. Russell has. I can say that firsthand.
Mayor, I'd like to revive my former motion and make the motion again.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wissman, would you state your motion, please, so I don't have to try to?
I'd like to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to remunerate Mr. Russell for the position of interim city manager at a hundred and forty thousand per annum, respective of his current position as emergency management director.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Wissman. That's required a second. You're on the mic, Russell, I couldn't hear someone.
I think it's gonna die, Mayor, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to negotiate this a little bit.
One second.
Okay.
I couldn't tell if you, I couldn't tell if your, if your mic, all right, is there any discussion?
I, I, let me say this, may I, may I have the floor, Mayor?
I should give it.
I just, uh, if it were me writing the check, I'd write, I'd pay him a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I think we, we have, we've had a precedent of setting back new city managers from the previous city manager's salary. So, I, you know, maybe we could split the difference between Commissioner Sauer's idea of a hundred and thirty-five and say a hundred and thirty-eight or something like that, and that'll be a setback. Uh, and maybe we can revisit Tommy's salary if, if he performs, you know, better than- Uh, and maybe we can revisit Tommy's salary if, if he performs, you know, better than I think he will, which would be, golly. What he, he'd be Superman. He already is. Uh, you know, if that's, if, you know, some sort of compromise like that's amenable, I could, I could support that. And it, uh, wow, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand is, is a handsome salary.
You're, you're suggesting that we do a hundred and thirty-eight?
We split the difference, we just split the difference between a hundred and thirty. Commissioner, Commissioner Sauer said one thirty-five. Commissioner Wismann said one forty. Uh, you know, we, we probably should follow our precedent of, of, uh, blowing it just a little bit, but I, I do want him well remunerated.
Question of-
Excuse me. May I, excuse me, may I speak to the board?
Oh, no, who, who is that?
This is Kathy.
Oh, okay, because it's lighting up on caller two. I saw your name on the screen, but caller two's left. Is, is, uh, what, what are you going to, what do you need to say?
Well, a, as the board was discussing this, I did want to, uh, just bring forward that Tommy would be eligible for approximately a ten thousand dollar payout of compensatory leave before the fiscal year is up. So as you think about the total compensation, that might be something also to just kind of weigh in mind in terms of hitting that dollar value that you ultimately want him to arrive at.
I think, what did we, do you know, uh, Ms. Fields? Did we have Miss Steinhauser at one forty and we started Mr. Parker at one forty? Was that true?
Yes, there is different classifications. So when they're working, they wouldn't be able to receive a payout of compensatory leave. So that's what kind of makes Tommy's situation different as a seasonal employee. He can separate service and per ordinance upon his separation of service, he would receive a payout of compensatory leave. So I just wanted to be sure the board was aware of all of those items as they move forward and make a decision that they deem appropriate.
Okay, so let me ask the question again. When Miss Steinhauser started, she was at, she started at one forty, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then when Mr. Parker started, what was his salary?
It was a hundred and forty thousand as a, as a appointed city manager.
Okay, so we did not step him back?
They both started at the same amount. I think another commissioner was making the point that upon Cindy Steinhauser's departure, she was at a hundred and forty-seven, but the pay didn't resume at a hundred and forty-seven. It began at a hundred and forty.
So if we started at the same starting, I don't know if that helps Commissioner Tippett or not, that we would be starting as, as we did the previous two with that precedent, the last two.
Uh, uh, you know, Mayor, I, I guess we're just going to vote, you know, and see what, what comes out of this. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a handsome salary, but he's going to be asked, he's going to be asked, there's going to be a lot asked of him. So, um, I don't even know where we are. Where are we in the, in the process?
With you, uh, Ms. Fields chimed in on that. And I think you, you said the question, you said something about we stepped people back when we started them and, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, yes. And it, I guess what I was, there was some talk about when we hired, when we hired Mr. Parker, that he would come in at Miss Steinhauser's final salary, that the position had advanced that far, okay?
Yeah, now we-
Position had advanced that far. And we decided that, we decided as a group that, you know, uh, that was probably not the best course of action is to put him in that, in the position at that advanced level. So we held him back at whatever it was.
The starting for Miss Steinhauser. What was, uh, Ms. Fields, what was Mr. Parker's, uh, final salary when he, um, left?
A hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
So we would be in fact stepping back from the one forty-six to the one forty. So that would be-
If the payout of leave is not included. So if you include the payout of leave, then that would be, in a, in a twelve-month period, that would add another ten thousand dollars to the compensation package. So it would not be stepping back if you include a payout of compensatory leave. If you're looking only at bi-weekly pay, then yes, it would be a lesser amount.
Yeah, if we look at bi-weekly pay. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Waldridge?
Um, what was, um, Kathy, the salary now for Mr. Tommy in his director position is forty-one, um, dollars and twenty cents an hour. Um, within that, does that, does that add up to a certain salary? Are, is that forty hours, thirty-six, thirty-seven point five? Is that forty hours? And do we pay him overtime right now for those hours?
Uh, that would equate to eighty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for a full-time, thirty-seven and a half hour a week position. And I certainly think that the position should be paid higher than that. And I think it's important that the position be paid at least within the starting band for that role, uh, which starts just under a hundred thousand. So in my view, it would be important for the board to be mindful of the starting range. Oftentimes when people step into interim capacities, they're new in that capacity. This is an opportunity for them to gain experience. It's, it's often their first time in that role. So I will say that in my mind, starting somewhere closer to that point makes sense in that it's consistent with what other interim city managers have received. It's consistent with it being an early experience, uh, and it stays within band for the position.
Mayor, I got a motion.
Mr. Tippett?
I, I, I move that we, uh, vote to remunerate Mr. Russell at a yearly salary of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, we can add whatever separation packages he gets that Ms. Fields was referring to. I guess that's going to be around ten thousand dollars, right?
Yes, that's correct.
That'd be a hundred and forty thousand, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollar package.
Apologies. I'm just now thank you too. Ms., uh, I thought you were going to make it like a, uh, an amended motion to Commissioner Wismann.
I'm sorry, I withdraw the, I didn't know the motion was on the floor.
I just wanted, when you said motion, I didn't know if you were going to do like an, like an amendment or, or how you were going to do it.
No, I, I, I withdraw that improper motion. Okay, I'll wait for this other motion to get off the floor.
Mayor, I'll, I'll rescind my motion then. It seems like we're getting no traction.
Okay.
If you rescind the second.
So I'm going to, then I'll, I'll restate the motion. Uh, I think we should, uh, uh, however that works out, however the details work out, we, we pay Mr. Russell a hundred and thirty thousand dollar salary for the four months he'd probably be here. Uh, and the ten thousand dollar severance, uh, crude leave or whatever that is Ms. Fields was referring to, would be another ten thousand dollars that we give him, a hundred and forty thousand dollar package.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I can make a statement. I think that ten thousand dollars is on a twelve, is that not correct? It's on a twelve-month period or, uh-
That would be twenty thousand.
Uh, Ms. Fields? What is the ten thou, what did you base the ten thousand on?
Six minutes.
When an employee separates service, our ordinance says that they're paid out unused compensatory time. So in calculating the value of paying out that unused compensatory time, it's just shy of ten thousand dollars. And Mr. Russell's required to separate service in a fiscal year. So therefore he would receive at least one payout. Um, and in fact, could potentially receive more. But it's something that he and I have talked about and both of us are on the same page that, that one payout makes sense, but additional payouts beyond that, um, probably don't. But ultimately that's something for the board to determine and set. Uh, but it is something that he and I have talked about and I, I think we're on the same, uh, page with that.
So, Mayor, I have a question.
Good, Commissioner Waldridge?
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, so what was, um, I'm sorry, real quick Kathy, what was the actual interim salary for Keith Parker?
Uh, we'd have to look it up. I think that he was, don't hold me hard and fast to this, but I'm guessing he was probably around ninety-eight thousand plus an eighteen percent. So I'll do some quick math on that. Yep, that turns out to be total around a hundred and fifteen thousand, but he would not have been eligible for a ten thousand dollar, uh, compensatory payout.
Okay.
Call for a question on the motion.
Okay.
And you added on that being twenty-five, so fifteen thousand dollars more.
Commissioner Waldridge?
I'm going to have, oh, I'm going to have to say no.
Commissioner Tippett?
I just don't see the numbers.
Okay. Could I ask for the motion to be restated?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
Okay. Vote to remunerate Tommy Russell at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars plus ten thousand dollars package added to the salary, which would be the unused comp time of ten thousand dollars.
We, uh, I get, okay, yeah, that's fine. Yes, I vote yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Wismann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor Ma?
Uh, I vote yes. I'll explain my vote and I want to thank again Mr. Russell. Nobody that I've, um, thought about would ha, has, well, period. Nobody's had more experience than Mr. Russell in terms of city government over forty, or forty years time. And he goes above and beyond. There's time, um, because I don't work as straight. Uh, I work on the, uh, whenever we need. There's, there's times when he calls and I talk to him, uh, whenever, whenever everybody's asleep and he's handling issues, um, a, as well as anybody I know. And I, I trust him fully in, in making tough decisions and I think he'll be a calming factor. I already know that he's been able to do that in the past and having the opportunity to see that, um, I gladly vote yes and appreciate his service and I hope that he will, uh, accept that. We'll, we'll ask him later. Commissioner Waldridge?
Um, and I agree. I think, I think Tommy, you've done a great job as emergency. I think you're, you know, you're stepping in and you're helping out in this situation. Um, and, and by all means, this is not a personal thing. This is just a numbers thing for me, so please don't take it personal. Um, because I just, I just think more of a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five would have been reasonable with that ten thousand dollars add-on. Um, but I also think, you know, he's doing such a great job. You know, I know Mayor said that you, he calls you all hours of the night and stuff. And that's, that's what you are. You're around the clock during emergency management and I get that. And, you know, maybe we should think about looking at his, uh, salary when he does happen to go back to maybe being full director and, and, and what that looks like for him. But, um, that, I just want you to know that it's not personal from my heart. By all means, I'm just a numbers person and it's just, I can't agree with it, so.
Okay. Um, that concludes our agenda. So the next side of the wood-
Who's adjourned, Mayor?
About Commissioner Tippett?
Second.
My Commissioner Wismann, any discussion? Being none, um, let's call it the clerk call the roll, just because we're on an audio maybe.
Mr. Waldridge? Yeah. Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wismann?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor Ma?
Yes, thank you all. We adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thanks to our wonderful staff for all your work.
Thank you all.